Or do we do a roll call first?
Yes, please.
Okay, we'll do a roll call. Um Gary Montoya.
Present.
Okay, Mister um Secretary Wells. Board President Hasky. Or Vice President Hasky, I'm sorry.
Um Cheryl she did answer so she's having a hard talking, yeah.
Okay, and um Board President Aspas.
Um she's not on zoom right now.
Okay. Uh but we do have a quorum with three with um Vice President Hasky, myself, board member George, and board member Mister Montoya. And so we will uh read through the agenda. The routine matters. We just had A call meeting to order and verify a quorum through a roll call. Two student staff and community recognition. Newcombe High School first place. Um winner in education Rising State Conference by Sandra Lunt Hill. Comments from the audience um and then four reports. Unique trip requests, Kirtland Central High School BPA National Leadership Conference Anaheim, California, April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three through May first, twenty twenty three by Villa Vasquez. B unique trip requests Shiprock High School, TBA, Kirtland Middle School, Newcombe Middle School and Judy Nelson Elementary. Gifted and talented education. G E R twenty first summer residential program Indianapolis, Indiana, July first through the fifteenth, twenty twenty three by Leandro Ventorina. C unique trip request Newcombe High School Computer Science, New Mexico State University, Los Cruces, New Mexico, March twenty eighth through the thirty first, twenty twenty three by Garin S- Solderes. Sorry if I mispronounced your last name. D unique trip request Newcombe High School Educated Educator Educations Educators Rising. Um national conference Orlando, Florida, June twenty eighth, twenty twenty three through July third, twenty twenty three by Sandra Lunt Hill. E fundraising request Shiprock High School Band Navajo Taco Sale and Delivery, March thirtieth and thirty first, twenty twenty three by Miss Helen West. F memorandum of understanding with Evolvement Program at Newcombe High School by Sandra Lunt Hill. G creating a M O U with Save the Children's Organization by Alfreda Harvey. H bilingual multicultural education program grant application by Cheryl Benali. I A R P fund for retention stipends by Donovan Donovan Yasi. J accounts payable dispersment dispersment listing outstanding checks listing. Expenditure report and re revenue report by Donovan Yasi. K procurement over sixty thousand by Donovan Yasi. L budget adjustment and journal entries by Donovan Yasi. One eleven hundred or I'm sorry eleven thousand operational. Zero one zero one T eleven thousand operational zero one zero two T. One fifty one hundred impact aid operational. Zero one zero three T two four one zero one title one part A. Essa zero zero nine eight T. Two four three zero eight. C R R S A S R two zero one zero zero dash D two seven four zero five two zero two zero school bus cameras zero zero nine six dash D. M educational assistant needs assessment survey by Leandro Ventorina. In graduate profile update by Peter Deswood. Oh social studies adoption by Jennifer Huffman. P safety protocol for animal at large by Cindy Theodore, Devon Verhose and David Griego. Q doctoral program research study on the implementation of social emotional learning curriculum in a secondary school with Native American Studies by Sandra Westbrook. Requested uh for approval of gift donation for East Walmart Nosh Chitty Elementary School by Mia McClaw. S Navajo Nation, Johnson O'Malley application school year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four by Mia. Um Kunets. And five discussion items for the March twenty first, twenty twenty three regular school board meeting. And six adjournment A motion to adjourn the work session meeting. And we will get started with student staff and community recognition number two. And that is A Newcombe High School first place winner and educators rising state conference by Sandra Lunt Hill. Miss Hill.
Miss George, she's just now zooming in.
Okay, just uh do we we'll just wait for her. Give her a couple minutes, is that okay?
Um she should be right.
O- okay.
Miss Lunt Hill. Are you available?
Yes, sorry, I lost my connection and I just came back in um also my student. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, yeah wait hold on just I'm sorry um uh Sharon, do I have to do a motion to accept the agenda?
No, not for the work session.
Oh, okay, okay, Miss Lynn, go ahead, I'm sorry.
That's okay, um I was also trying to my student was trying to get into and I don't know if he was able to make it um but um I just wanted to say thank you to the board and um our trip to the state conference was successful and our um Ja- Jacobi Judy actually placed first in state in a speech competition that's called Creative Lecture. And that's a very difficult competition, so he was uh first place of all the people who were there from the in the state of New Mexico.
Okay, um was your student able to log in? Have we do you see them on there?
Um I was just um I I had just contacted him and they were trying. I don't know, maybe they ran into some trouble, I'm not sure.
Okay.
His mom was trying to get it.
Okay, um are there any other um board members that would like to make a comment or um?
Comment.
Uh go ahead, Mister Montoya.
Uh Miss Hill, I if the students aren't able to get on, I just wanna congratulate them for for what they did and understanding that that part of communication is huge and I just wish that uh all students would take the time and invest that time to become proficient communicators. Because even in today's world uh with the expansion of um communication basically worldwide, it's imperative that they understand how to do that and do that at a very high level, especially if they decide to go into college. Uh it's that's a very valuable tool to be able to have. So congratulations to you and your student. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Montoya, and I will let him know that you said that and I I too am really proud of him. Um I was able to watch his speech and um when he spoke in front of the judges and he did a really, really great job so. And like I said, that's not an easy speech competition. Um it's it's called creative lecture and it's like a TED talk type of speech, um but he really pulled it off. He did a great job and represented our school really well and our district.
Vice President um Hasky, do you do you have any comments? Uh any other board members have any other comments? Secretary Wells, are you on?
Miss George and uh Mister Well was having trouble logging on so.
Okay.
Having technical difficulties right now.
Okay, Mister Carlson, Mister Carlson or Mister Deswood, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
I don't know if you can hear me, I I can just say something real quick. Um again, we are very proud of of the students for doing that kinda uh especially just as Mister Montoya brought up, that communication piece is huge in our world today, so Miss Lynn Hill, if you would just echo what what Mister Montoya said for for district leadership as well. Great job.
Thank you Superintendent Carlson.
Yeah, I would just like to say um congratulations and um just echoing the same thing, it's very um uh well good job that that the students have done and very proud of them for their representation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments um from the board? If not, we will move on to number three.
Miss George, I don't have any comments from the audience at this time.
Okay. Oh Miss um Suzette says congratulations and great job.
Thank you.
Okay. Mm-hmm. Um Miss Lunt, thank you for Miss Lunt Hill, thank you for um giving us the presentation and um uh maybe next time we can hear from the students. And um thank you for everything that you've done and your support for the students. Thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on. There's no comments from the audience on number three, so we'll move on to number four reports. A unique trip request Kirtland Central High School BPA National Leadership Conference Anaheim, California. Do we have Miss Villa Vasquez?
Yes, hold on, let's see if my camera works here. So I am Miss B with uh Kirtland Central High School. Now you can see me. Um do you want me to just tell you a little bit about the request? Is that how it works? Um so BPA, alright, um Business Professionals America, the C T S O, which is career technical um school organization, actually competed here in February. Um we had twenty one students um go and compete and we got nineteen that are able to go to nationals. Yay! So um I'm very proud of these students. Um this BPA again is one of those programs that kind of has a big umbrella of uh career opportunities um which is like accounting um um Microsoft uh Word and other programs like that. They also have like medical billing. Um we had people that placed in um prepared speech and uh that kind of like present. Um we had a group of students actually create also like um like a story for a video game, you know, like if they promoted a game and that was a group of three students. And in that I wanna, you know, I wanna highlight that we actually had a special needs student that because he's my student, he decided to join BPA. He actually made it to state with um interview skills as well. And he um he would have placed, but there was a big competition this year. They said there was almost five hundred students that competed at state level, which is great. Um but in that group, we also have that um that student that he worked really hard. Um the other students supported each other. It was an amazing thing. So what happens now is now we're gonna represent not only um our school and our district. Now we're also representing the state of New Mexico. So we will go uh if you guys allow us and I and I really hope that you guys uh take this as a as an important part of their career experience and stuff to go to Anaheim, California and represent and test and compete against um twenty one other states. That includes Puerto Rico, Alaska. Um I think last year it was even from wanna say China? Is that correct, Miss Foster, if you're on here?
Yes. Yes, we did have China.
Yeah, I was like there was another country that was representing there, which is really good experience and exposure to these students. Um I know the price and the the expense is high, so we are fundraising. Um we've done some fry bread sales and I've seen some of the you guys be there at the the games. We're still trying to do some more. Um we're still working on the merchant discount cards that will provide some of that funding. But I'm I'm asking for for an approval to be able to travel with these students, taking them again to um to Anaheim. Not all of them are the same students. This is a it's some of the old ones, but a lot of new ones as well. Our group actually grew. Um with that said, um they also have certifications and workshops and so they have a lot more that they'll do, not only just compete, it's actually the experience. Um they have workshops every hour or so. They have a certifications for Microsoft. They actually go and and log in and try to to get that certification. You know, I I'm hoping to have them one day go to the beach so they can actually be at the beach for the first time in their their lifetime and you know, I I hope that they're able to to experience a whole thing and see what the world is. Um you know, and and keep thinking that the the skills that they're laying now here at high school, they're gonna be able to use later on in um in real life and so um I'm asking uh for this request to to be able to um support us and help us uh travel to to Anaheim here in the next month. Any questions?
Does the board have any questions?
Uh not so much a question but a comment. And again, the work said this before and I got to see you at the during the playoffs there in Kirtland and I truly appreciate everything that you're doing to help elevate these kids. And again, as I've said before, that that business component is huge, just as with the public speaking and speech that we just heard of from the other student before you. That's that that's important and not only that, but the exposure that you're able to give them. I know my wife and I, we've taken students to um SeaWorld San Diego, like four different times. And it was for their um their uh marine biology camp and they a lot of those kids had never been to the ocean, never been to the beach. And so for them to get that kind of experience, um again, kudos to you, hats off to you for doing what you're doing and being able to uh carry that passion with you to help to um fully develop these students, their uh their minds, their learning, their knowledge. Um so great job to all of them and to you as well, so thank you.
Thank you. Like those students are just amazing. Like I said, um I still have in contact with the other students that have graduated. Last year we had four seniors and they they appreciate like they they And they, they appreciate, like, they, they even said, if you guys ever need us to go and talk to the board and. Tell them how important B P A is, we will do that. And I said, thank you, I'll keep your number. Um, but with the, like I said, it's endless possibilities of what they can do in business. You know, I have. Uh, seven seniors currently and, uh, like I said, some of them are going into accounting, business. Um, huh, next year I'm hoping that I ha- we have, uh, one student that's gonna graduate with his associate's degree. And his high school diploma in business administration. So, very proud. They were supposed to be here, but spring break kinda got into the. The mix and they, they weren't able to come in, but I'm gonna set, um, there, we're gonna set a time to, for them to come and just present to you guys. I, I didn't realize we can take some, some of that time, so, uh, we'll probably do that for next board meeting, so, I appreciate that.
Any other comments from the board?
Um, I would just like to say the same thing, um, kudos to the kids and, or the young students and. You know, it's a great opportunity and they say that if you have business under your. Under you, you know, you can go into any kind of, any kind of occupation and. Because you're, you're, you have business underneath you and you have a foundation of running a, a business. So that's really good and I thank you for your. For your involvement with, with the, with the students. Great job.
Yeah, I, I wanna comment that this year we actually did, um, we worked with three advisors this year. Um, the other two were kind of volunteer because they don't get paid, but we worked really well together. I have to tell you, this is how it. We had me, myself, I work with public speaking, with presentations. Uh, Ms. Foster, which is online, she works with, uh, uh, word processing, um, accounting, she does all that. Works with the students. And then we have Mr. Ramado, um, he's a new teacher at the Kirtland Central High School. He also, he works with, um, C plus plus. Programming, Python, all that stuff. He can do all that stuff, so he's worked with students on that part of it. So, as a trio, we've done really well, um, with these students and I'm hoping that we can continue working with them in the next following years. Um, I'll be the support, um, Ms. Foster is probably gonna be the head, um. B P A advisor, but you know what? Like, it's really awesome to have support from you guys. And parents, you should see, they were all there selling fried bread with us. Like, they know how important and I appreciate that every moment of the way. That, you know, when we have a community that's strong, we know that we are creating, you know, great leaders. Um, in our community and even if they expand and like, I know they sometimes come back. And it's just great and I appreciate that. Like I said, for you guys, I, I do wanna let you know that I do appreciate every single thing you do. Um, Superintendent, I, like I said, I've seen it and I appreciate it a lot.
Thank you, Ms. Vasquez.
Well, thank you. Thank you to the parents as well for their involvement in the fundraising and. And, um, supporting their students and supporting the program. If there's, um, not any more, any more comments or questions, we will move on to report B. Unique tri- trip requests for Shiprock High School, T B A. K M S Newcombe Middle School and Judy Nelson Gifted and Talented to Indianapolis, Indiana, July first through the fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Do we, uh, Mr. Venturino?
Yes, Ms. George, good evening. I'm here.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so good evening, um, Ms. George, uh, Board Member George, um, Mr. Montoya, Ms., um. Husky and Mr. Wells, Superintendent Carson and Assistant Superintendent. Um, Deswood and community members. So I'm basically here returning to the board, um, asking, um, for the request to approve. Our, our trip to, um, Indianapolis. Um, it's be- it's. If you can remember last, uh, month, I presented the, the partnership that we are establishing with. Purdue University, um, with their gifted education, um, research and res- research and. Resource Institute, um, residential, summer residential program and, uh, we are here, or I'm here to. Uh, ask your permission to have our twenty students, um, participate with. With this rare opportunity given, um, to our C C S D students. Um, students will be visiting and experience life in university setting. Um, during the, their stay, two-week stay in India- in the, in Indiana. They will also have the opportunity to collaborate with international and national students. Um, just similar to what was presented earlier, it's an opportunity for our students to see. You know, the, the high technology, the high-tech, um, facilities that Purdue University has to offer. Um, I just wanted to mention that their newest, um, facility in biomedical engineering is one of our. Or the top-notch, um, laboratory in the United States. So, uh, we're asking and seeking for your approval. Uh, we have, um, prepared, um, the itinerary and, um, information in regards with. The trip. So basically, twenty students, twenty-two students are, are, um. Recommended to join ranging from elementary, sixth grade, middle school and high school. Um, we are also asking, or we're also planning to send five of our staff, um. Four, three of them are teachers, one is an administrator and one is from the, um, from the district's office that will be. Um, a, a guide for our students during their stay for, for the next two, you know, for that two-week summer camp. Um, so the, the time will be from July first to, um, July fifteen, but we're asking for. For them to, you know, leave early and then, uh, leave er- uh, one day early and be back one day after. Um, so the return date will be July fifteen approximately at seven thirty. Um, returning the flights from Indianapolis. Um, sponsors, uh, will be named. Um, and they will be in, in traveling on the bus routing from the airport to Purdue University. Um, um, three, as I mentioned earlier, there's three certified staff members, one building administrator and one. Specialist. Um, I will be the sponsor, uh, and contact person for. For the students and, um, our administrators, members of C C S D, um, Central Consolidated. Um, we are asking for them to stay in Indianapolis for a, for a night, um, because of the travel. Be- in between, um, from those dates. And. Yes, and these are the proposed travel itineraries, um, starting from July first, which is a Saturday. And we're planning to have them look at our traveling from Durango, um, to Indianapolis, straight to Indianapolis. And then the same, uh, can you scroll down a little bit, Sharon? Um, so the, the summer camp is located, as I said, in Purdue University. Um, Purdue University will be providing the, um, the amenities and accommodations for, for. Both students and admin, um, and staff. Um, they will be, um, living in the residential hall. Um, inside campus. And then by July fifteen, they'll be coming back. Departured from La Plata County Airport in Durango at about seven thirty P M. That's also a Saturday. So there is also a, a itemized. Costs for the travel and we are looking at, can you scroll a little bit, Sharon? Go down. Okay, so I think it's about forty thousand for, for the entire trip for both students and teachers. I think it's on the first page, Sharon, but those are all the itemized, um. Information with student costs. And other than that, I have, I, I stand for question.
Does the board have any, um, questions or comments?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Venturino, how, how were these students selected to go on this trip specifically?
Yes, sir. Um, so, um, when we heard about the, the opportunity. We have communicated it to the, uh, to the building administrators and we had asked for. Um, like recommendations from their gifted teachers or even for, from their regular ed teachers. Um, so, so far we have, you know, um, a, a good amount of representation from. From elementary, middle school and high school. Uh, and then they, uh. Yeah, basically it's a recommendation from, from, from the teachers and administrators from the building. And we had had, um, I think we opened a recommendation for a week and then we closed it out. Um, because of the, you know, the time, the timeframe that we need to get, um, the numbers to. Our partners in Purdue University.
Okay, so are there any specific parameters that they had to meet or have to meet in order to be selected to go?
Um, yes, sir. So, the, the, the principals are, are actually asked if they can. Um, basically those who were identified, um, previously as a gifted students, um. Gifted and educate, and talented students, um, primarily, however. Um, so since our, our numbers are not kinda like in the. Uh, what, what I'm saying is like there are. Not enough gifted students, so we are, we opening up to students who are. In the level of like they're taking the high ability classes, courses, um, in the middle school or even in, at the high school. So there are threshold that, um, that they were, uh, uh, like selected for.
Okay, there was something you said that gives me a little bit of a pause, but. Uh, I won't, we won't discuss that now, but, um. Yeah, I'm just trying to curious to figure out exactly how we do and, uh, again, what the parameters were for selection, so.
Yes, um, so the, actually the re- the air, uh, the Jerry, the summer residential program. They have their own, um, kinda like, uh, as you said, um, a requirement, um, basically for. For those who are participating. However, for us, and we do believe that our students are capable, even though. They're not, um, identified or, um, poten- they are potentially gifted, talented and creative students. So we open that up for recommendations, but I think in the future we will be able to. Um, s- since we're starting up our gifted education programming this year, we'll behave, uh, we'll be able to. Set that up for the next upcoming, um, you know. Sending those students to the residential camp or program. But for this year, I, um, we actually. Um, resorted to, um, recommendation, but as I said, um, it's all kinda like. The principals and administrators, um, recommendation for, for now. And most of them are in the gifted education program. Or taking the gifted ed classes.
Okay, again, there's a couple of things that we're gonna have to address, um, in the very near future regarding that program, but. Nonetheless, um, I appreciate certainly the consideration to, again, to expose these. Our students to, uh, further education and expand their, their learning and their minds. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, is there any, any, um, other board members who would like to make a comment or have a question? Uh, Ms., Ms. Husky has said, thank you for finding those opportunities for our students.
Certainly, Ms. Husky, thank you for all the support and all the board members supporting all our students. Um, exposing them to a very rare and exclusive opportunity to see what's. You know, our u- top university can offer us. Thank you.
Yes, I would just like to say also, um, Mr. Venturino, that thank you for this opportunity bringing our. Bringing it to our students that they have the opportunity to go to a prestigious college and they get to experience. The livelihood of that and, in real, real time. So, thank you for that, um, opportunity.
And also I'd like to, um, say thank you to the superintendent and assistant superintendent and support. Uh, with this effort as well as the finance department, um, making sure that we have, you know. Uh, the funding and, you know, the resources that we are, you know, s- you know, investing for our students. So. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, if there's, um, if there's not any more, uh, questions or comments, we will move on to. Report C, Unique Trip Requests, Newcombe High School, Computer Science. New Mexico State University, Las Cruces, New Mexico, March twenty-eight through the thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, by Garen Salderes?
Yeah.
Did I say your name correctly? Sorry if I didn't.
Yes.
Okay.
So, once again, our students was invited to join a STEM competition. And the categories that we chose to join is senior solar print, video game design. Board game design, kid's story writing related to technology. Extemporaneous speech related to technology and essay writing related to technology. That's why I have Ms. Sandra Land Hill with me and Ms. Agnes Proliamante. To help me with the extemporaneous speech, essay writing and kids' writings. Kid's story writing related. And we chose the, our board game design, we chose. The Four Sacred Mountains topic in that game that we are developing. And then in our kid's story writing, it's about a true story of ours, our. Student who has. Uh, problem in reading, but really good in programming robots. So that is a true story of. Our student and I think. They will reach the top position in that category. So this will be on March twenty-eighth, going to Las Cruces and we will be back by. March thirty-one. Uh, the number of students who. Uh, say yes during our recruitment is twenty-one, but the kids going to. Las Cruces now, the final count is sixteen students. Different grade levels and majority are ladies.
Yeah, perfect.
We have four chapero- chaperones for that event. So, March twenty-eighth is basically our trip. The first day of the competition will be March twenty-nine. Second day will be March thirty and the awarding and then the last day going back to Newcombe.
Okay, um, does any, any board members have any comments or questions? Go ahead, Mr. Montoya.
Again, I I'm just enamored with the progress that's being made with the students and then the expansion into STEM program development. It is just, it's impressive. And I I appreciate all the work that everybody's doing to to truly be able to um, help our students. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Um, Board Pres- Board Vice President Hasky, do you have anything to add, or Mr. um, Secretary Wells? Oh, um, let's see. Ms. Hasky says she doesn't have any questions, but I would like to say thank you for supporting our students. You're all doing an amazing things for our students.
Thank you.
Yes, and I'd just like to continue saying what the other board members are. Thank you for all that you have, um, you know, um, invested into our students and, um, you know, getting them involved in these, these new tech- technology programs that are upcoming in the future. That's both are really good. Thank you. If there's not any more questions or, um, comments, we will move on to mm, is it D, unique trip requests, Newcom High School Educators Educators Rising National Conference, Orlando, Florida, June twenty eighth, twenty twenty three through July third, twenty twenty three, by Sandra Lunt Hill?
Okay, so I, do I speak now? Sorry.
Oh, yes, go ahead, yeah.
Okay, um, so I did give the paperwork to, um, Ms. Rae, so I think that um, you have this and this is, and this is just a request, um, for us to attend the national conference. So, um, the student who won first place in state in the speech competition that we recognized earlier, Jacoby Judy, he, um, is going to go on to compete, um, nationally, and, um, I'm going to go with him, and I've I've also been accepted to be a national judge at the competition. Um, I won't be judging his competition, but, um, I will be judging a competition, I I will be a judge for one of the competitions, um, at the national conference. So that's, um, this is the first time that I'm doing something like this and I'm really excited about it. And I'm hoping that gives me some more insight into what the students need to do to win on the national level. New Mexico doesn't always win on the national level. We had a couple people placed from our state last year, and I'm I have high hopes for Jacoby though, because he's, um, he is a really, really great speaker. Um, at any rate, um, we, I would also like our Navajo language teacher to attend. Um, we're trying to see if we can get funding for him to go, and the reason for this is what I'd like to see, um, with our Educators Rising Program at Newcom High School is I would like to expand the program, uh, and follow in the the trend now in the state, which is to have a bilingual program. So, uh, I think that's probably more appropriate for our school is to have a bilingual Educators Rising Program and to foster, um, not only teaching skills and interest in careers in education, but also, um, maybe having more mentorships for students who would want to teach in dual language programs and, um, and to also bring their own heritage and language into the classroom. So, um, I would really like to see that happen. Um, I've been working with people on the state level finding out about other um, dual language programs uh, that are, um, and there's just a few right now in the state of New Mexico, but it is something that they are promoting. And this year I joined the, excuse me, Educators Rising Task Force in order to learn more about that, so I'm I'm really hoping that we can get the funding for our Navajo language teacher to also go to this conference. Uh, the reason would be because the conference is really inspiring and I think that to see what happens on the national level would be really helpful for him, um, as he's trying to make the decision. Sorry, I've had a cold this week, um, as he's trying to make the decision to, um, whether or not to, um, to join me in creating this dual language program. So, we would be going with the student, um, Jacoby Judy. It would be the two of us as adults, um, adult teachers to this conference for educators.
Okay, does, um, any board members have any questions or comments?
Just a comment again.
Go ahead, Mr. Montoya.
This, uh, Lunt Hill, um, as you all know, the biggest fear for more, for most people is, uh, public speaking. In fact, they fear that, they they fear that more than, and dying itself, which is kind of funny, but um,
Yeah.
you you know, for for an adult to get up there and do it is one thing, um, and I've seen people uh, just freeze like hearing headlights when given the opportunity. But for a, a young student, I mean, that bodes to the competence of the individual and quite frankly, the work that you're putting into it to to get them to that point, so for that, again, I am truly, uh, appreciative of the efforts that you're, um, giving to our students, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montoya. I appreciate your appreciation. It means a lot. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to add the same. Thank you for, um, you know, your involvement and in and being inclusive of, um, having the, the Navajo, you know, teacher involved, and I think that's a, that's that's a great, um, you know, concept to involve that, that teacher and in the future, you know, uh, that's that's good for the program, so thank you very much for that insight. Ms. Hasky says, thank you again. It's wonderful to hear all these amazing opportunities for our students.
Yes, thank you, and yeah, I I I hope I'm not out of order in commenting. I just was thinking, being here at this meeting, there are a lot of opportunities for our students that are, um, being showcased at this meeting. It's very positive and and I'm really happy to be a part of that, and I know the other teachers have worked really hard too for their programs and it's just really great to see that the students who are interested in various career fields are getting, um, a chance to explore and um, find out more about what they really want to do in life. I think that really helps motivate the students.
Yes, I agree. Well, thank you. If there's not any more questions or comments, uh, we'll move on to E, fundraising requests, Shiprock High School Band, Navajo Taco Sale and Delivery, March thirtieth through thirty first.
Sweet. Hi, I'm Helen West. I'm the band director, as you guys probably know. So I'll keep this really short, um, basically we want to, we're going to have a Navajo taco sale that was already approved um, at the school during our, our student, our student-led conferences, but we want to pre-sale to local Shiprock area schools. So this would only be to teachers and staff. It wouldn't be to the grand community, although it would be to you guys if you are in the administration office. Um, so pre-sale tickets, tickets would go on sale Monday through that Wednesday afternoon before student-led conferences, and then we would deliver said taco, collect said money, and immediately return said money to the lockbox at Shiprock High School. Um, people doing the delivering would be myself and other, um, one or two other parents, uh, hopefully who are, uh, uh, CCSD employees, but not necessarily. No students would be touching money as is policy, um, and that's pretty much everything. Any questions?
Any questions from the board or any comments?
Looking forward to getting a Navajo taco.
Yes, it always depends who makes the tacos, but I will say, as long as it's not me, they're pretty good.
Um, just for, uh, just for documentation, just, um, I know there's no school on parent-teacher conferences, but if you guys were ever to be asked, especially for the health and wellness part, that there is no school that day during, um, lunch for the competition of, um, the, the food. You know what I'm talking about, the food competition thing, yeah. But otherwise, um, hope I can buy some Navajo tacos.
Yes, I would never want to compete with school lunch. I do know that rule, but yes, there's no school, um, and we are not competing with the free and, uh, free lunch during that day.
Oh, oh, um, sorry, I was, I thought I was talking, I was on mute. Um, Mr. Superintendent, I had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, with these co-curricular trips, like the, that we, that we heard tonight, BPA Education, Educators Rising and um, Purdue, and some of these unique trip requests, can those be paid out from the operational budget, um, you know, or any of the grants that the school has? Um, you know, maybe their fundraising can be paid for the fun part of their trip, you know, if they go sightseeing or if they gets like, I don't know, special snacks or something, um, and you know, the district could pay for their transportation, lodging, registration and meals under the operational budget. Is that something that could be done?
So that is something we've been, we've been doing quite a bit. Um, I I don't know if you saw the, uh, Mr. Venturino's trip. I believe the majority of that is is paid through various funds. Um, we use grant funding, uh, buildings have have funding. Uh, we try to limit the fundraising possibilities, we could, you know, we want the district. If funding's available, we want to use it, and so I think that's kind of what you're, what you're getting at, and, uh, we do try to do that, yes, as much as possible.
Okay, great. That's something that, um, maybe, um, you and Mr. Yazi could, you know, go more into depth about and working through and seeing if, if that could be paid for for, um, these, because I know, um, in April, they, you guys stopped your budget, correct? You s- you guys stopped your spending and then some of these need to be paid, you know, before the the new year, um, July.
Yeah, pretty much, although, um, we do have some carryover and some other funding that we can utilize throughout, at least through the end of the school year. Um, budgets should be in place, but once that money is is identified and encumbered, um, we can still utilize that funding.
Okay. Um, let's see, uh, Ms. Hasky says, Superintendent Carlson, have we ever done tax credit fundraising efforts to go towards some of these trips?
I don't, I don't know that I can answer that, um. Yeah, I don't, I I'll have to look into that, uh, Vice President Hasky. And and I do, I do have some financial folks online, so, um, if we have the answer soon, I can let you know. Otherwise, I can look anywhere and I'll get back with you.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Montoya.
Uh, Superintendent, would that, what you're talking about, would that fall under Title Four?
Um, it could, if that's something that had been previously identified. Um, Title Four, they they do have some fairly strict regulations. I'm trying to see if we have that, the Title Four grant writer on here. If she could answer that, if I could form a friend, but she's not on here right now. Uh, perhaps Mr. Yazi could enlighten us as well.
Yeah, cause certainly, I mean, that's student support and academic enrichment. I just didn't know if that was utilization of how we would apply that in some of these instances that we're talking about today.
Miss George, may I answer that question? Is Mr. Diswood?
Go for it, Mr. Diswood.
All right, thank you. Thank you, uh, board members and, uh, staff, other directors and and I just, just really quickly, uh, Mr. Montoya, to answer your question, the amount of money in that Title Four is probably between two and three hundred thousand, so, and split up between four areas, um, Ms. Bell Bellmy, um, personally updated me on that budget earlier this week, so it's a little bit smaller, actually, it's a significantly smaller budget. So, uh, but there are funds available in there, uh, for for some of these, uh, um, trips and activities, but more than likely, majority of the funds, actually significant amount of the funds are in our, in our, um, in our, our main funds, uh, the eleven thousand or operations. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, sir.
So I'm to assume, um, that would also qualify under impact aid since it's discretionary funding and if we're putting that money directly into the classroom, fulfilling to what the LFC recommended? The, uh, consideration?
I believe so, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, yeah, um, so, yeah, we can just get that and see, um, how, how much more we could, we could help the students with, um, you know, um, paying for their trips and utilizing that money that that we need to spend and, um, e- especially those that at the school level who didn't know that they had, um, to pay for some of their, their, um, trips before the ending. I don't, I don't remember how to say it right, but I know like, um, in April or the end of March, they, everybody has to stop spending from that window until July first to the new school year, so that's my only concern as well. But with that, we will go on. If there's not any more questions or comments, we'll go on to report number F, Member Random of Understanding. Uh, oh, no, I'm sorry, MOU with Involvement Partner Program, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four.
Well, um, here I am again. So, um, this is, this is pretty routine. Um, we just need this approval. The Evolvement Program has been going on at Newcom High School ever since I've been there, and I haven't always been the advisor, but I am now. And, um, it's a really good program that, again, teaches our students, um, public speaking skills because they have to, uh, what they do is they educate people about the dangers of tobacco use, um, commercial tobacco use, and, um, they bring representatives that train They bring representatives that train them on how to um talk to people uh in public situations. And um it's just, it's just a really good program and it's um. It it's kind of a partner with my Educators Rising because it's about education, so the students are going to need to teach about this issue. And it's also um uh it's also a fundraising opportunity. We can um. When we have, when we host events, we can raise money for our school.
Okay, uh sorry, um. I lost um. I thought I lost connection, but I didn't. Were you still continuing, Miss Lunt?
Oh, no, I'm just saying it's um Evolvement is in at Newcombe High School, it's um. It's a partnership with Educators Rising and the students learn from Evolvement Representatives. Um they learn how to teach about the dangers of tobacco use, about commercial tobacco use. And um they learn how, then they learn public speaking skills. Through this program too, and then also uh it's also a way for us to raise funds for our program. Because when we host events, they um give us money. For for the Educators Rising Program.
Okay, is there any questions from the board, comments? Okay, Miss Suzette says she doesn't have any comments and I don't have any comments either, so thank you for that presentation, Miss Lunt Hill. And we will go on to G, creating a M O U with Save the Children's Organization by Alphita Harvey.
Good evening, can you all hear me? I'm on my phone, but I'm here.
Yes, we can hear you.
Awesome, thank you so much. Good evening, Mem- uh Board President, Members of the Board and Superintendent, thank you for having me. I am here to um. Ask that we are able to create an M O U with Save the Children Organization. This is um in order to partner with C C S D, um Save the Children. Would like to bring in the early steps to School Success Program. To three elementary schools, Ojo, Amarillo, Newcombe Elementary and Mesa Elementary. They did turn in a letter of intent um for each of their schools. We did meet with the three schools and our Assistant Superintendent um. Uh previous to this and um. The director for, one of the directors for Save the Children for New Mexico is online with us this evening to. Talk a little bit more about the program and um our intentions with the M O U. So this will be like phase one of three phases that we would go into with their partnership. We have already partnered with the Save the Children Organization through our food pantry, clothing pantry, so they donated. Several things to our pantry and that's gonna continue um. For future reference, we are still gonna partner with them with donations that they give to our district. But in addition to that, we'd like to create an M O U to strengthen our partnership and that's what we're here to request for this evening. And I'm hoping Yaha Aguilara is online. So she can share a little bit more about the program.
Thank you, Frida, um. Hi, Members of the Board, uh thank you for having me. My name is Yaha and I'm the Director for Save the Children. For New Mexico. Uh we're pretty excited to do uh to have this step in front of you as a letter of commitment. This program, what it brings, it supports the kids prenatal to age five. It works um through home visits, we have parent-child group meetings. We have a bookbag exchange that improves and helps out a lot on the literacy piece. For uh the four and five-year-olds. It also helps with the transition to school activities, school connection and in general with um the community collaboration. Between the different uh elementaries and also the community. So we would love to do um, you know, to keep going on our next step, we would be working with the budget. As Frida mentioned, um I met with a couple of the principals. The Assistant Superintendent to see a little bit on the budget. And um with your blessing, hopefully we can keep working on this and then you'll have um. The finalized budget to start this program during the fall of twenty twenty three.
Okay, thank you. Um do we have any board members with comments or questions? Go ahead, Mister Montoya.
I just wanna thank you for your uh partnership that you've developed with the school district. Everything and anything that you can do certainly to help our children is. Truly appreciative, so thank you for the continuation of your assistance to our communities. Appreciate it.
We're very happy um to be here and as Frida mentioned, one of our biggest things is, you know, provide books and. You know, literacy and math are our strength. But besides that, it's really cool to bring, you know, new toys or clothing whenever there's an opportunity. So that's um, you know, getting those smiles from those kids is is just something that you don't get anywhere else.
Thank you. Um my only um other question, Mister Carlson and Mister um. Super Mister Assistant Superintendent, um. How is this going to work with parents as teachers? Because parents as teachers, they work with the with the prenatal. Um up to um. Pre-K kindergarten and they also support home visits and parent-child involvement. And they also have book exchange and also, you know, pretty much the same. How is this going to um? Effect or is it going to inner circle work with um parents as teachers?
I think it would just supplement. I don't know if you wanna add to that, Yaha or or Freda. Uh but I think it would just be supplementary for the most part.
Yeah, on our side, um I've been trying to get in contact with them. We already partnered with also Firstborn. So they also do kind of the same, um but you know, between all the agencies. We we're trying to get to all the kids on that age because one agency doesn't have the hands to cover it all. Um and we're really able to share resources or to, you know, instead of having just one group of parents. To bring all the parents from the three agencies together, because we believe that collaboration is the only way. That, you know, we can help the families in the community.
May I add a little bit more too?
Uh go ahead, Mister Deswood.
Yeah, so it the way the program is, it is like Mister Carlson and Yaha said. Uh it's it's providing additional resources to our early uh early readers and families and educating and supporting them. Uh so it's not competing, it's just additional funds and resources and. Uh training uh to to support uh our early learners, our our early readers. Thank you.
Oh, that's great with the collaboration efforts um to make sure that we we access all the. The early learners in the communities, so thank you for that. And Miss um. Uh Vice President Hasky says she doesn't have any questions, so if no one else has any more questions or comments. We will move on to the next one. Thank you for that um presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh we'll go on to H, Bilingual Multicultural Education Program Grant Application. By Miss Benali.
Yes, good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, um. Uh Board President, uh Vice President, um Hasky and um. Secretary Wells, uh Board Member George and uh Board Member Montoya. And Superintendent Carlson and Assistant Superintendent uh Deswood. And my fellow colleagues that are on this meeting. I am Cheryl Benali, I am the um bilingual um coordinator for the intercultural and community outreach. Uh tonight I am presenting our um uh multicultural education program. Um grant and and also providing information regarding our Title Three. Uh so uh we every year, uh during this time of the year, we have our um. Grant funding that we have to reapply for for our um heritage and dual language programs and. Uh a part of this process is to get a renewal of a approval to continue the application process. And currently, the application opened uh February seventeenth and the deadline is March thirty first. So our bilingual multicultural education program, this is just a model, a program model as to how we serve our um. Students in the school district. Of course, the B M E uh pro- program is our language program. Which we have a heritage model and our dual language models. And um that also uh encompasses how we serve our English learners in the school district. Next slide, please. So this is just a a little organizational chart, uh we have our um I C O Director, Dr. Lopez and myself. And we have our bilingual supervisor, Roberta Adikayazi, and we are still searching for our E L D coach. Um go ahead and go on to the next slide. So our B M E uh program, so these this is just an overview. We have to um adhere to the B M E P Act of two thousand four. At the district level, uh we do the implementation for the language programs. I've identified the Navajo heritage. Spanish Heritage and Navajo Dual Language Programs. In that, we have a total of um thirty-one teachers that we support through this grant. And um the reporting part is where we do an annual report um. Uh actually, the annual application, which is due March thirty first, and then we do have a annual progress report that's usually due in September. And so basically, what this B M E P is referenced as the big um ac- you know, acronym for the Bilingual Multicultural Education Act. We continue to to provide funds for our um linguisty and culturally diverse students in grades K through twelve. And was also reflective of the uh Mark uh Yasi Martinez rulings. So this is uh basically the um actually statute for the B M E P goals, and so this is. Our goals as far as like what we set in order to meet, in order to serve our students in the school district. Go ahead, continue. So there is compliance of this grant, so it's a team effort and collaboration, so. It's a collaboration effort between our department, uh the Assistant Superintendent and the Principals. And also the heritage and dual language teachers. They assist us in answering the questions, they help us collect the data that is required for the grant. Identifying their um parent advisory committee, um that's also known as P A C representative. And we usually get a signature for that. For the um school ass- assurances. And we also have uh sections that we complete and the principals help us with this because the schools uh principals know their schools. Individually and to answer the questions really helps us compile all this information that we put in this application. And of course, we have to do a board presentation uh in order to get the um um district assurances signed. And also to meet our deadline by March thirty first. So here's the application process, of course, I reiterated, um this is what we go through, identify schools, the. Uh P A C committees and meeting dates, um the educators professional development. Uh language proficiency uh and supplies and materials, that's where we get into these heritage teachers to help us. And dual language teachers to help us answer that part. Uh the course instruction and instructional models and also to get the uh assurances signed by the school and the school district. And so this to help uh create a process and a timeline for our principals. And a continued collaboration, we I created this um. We we created this timeline to help principals to know what sections are due at certain points. In order to meet the deadline and to do the board report and also time for us to review our data and get everything collected. And submit it on a timely manner. So this is the part that goes, so so these are the schools that we do um assist. Uh some of these schools, um we have elementary and secondary and these are the schools of what this um. Application would be for for our heritage and dual language teachers. So we do continuous co- collaboration, um sometimes I have principals uh that email. And send their information right away and they say, give me the second part, um and we are ready for the next one and. It's just a continued collaboration and this is uh something that we have that has worked. And also our school principals know what the program is about because they they're helping us to compile this information. Thank you, um I stand for questions.
Thank you. Uh are there any questions from the board, any comments?
A couple of questions.
Go ahead, Mister Montoya.
So do we have enough participation Filipino students in the. Tagalog?
We do, uh that has been posed, um that has been brought up by our community member, a community parent who is um. Um a Filipino parent and uh it would be, that question has been brought up to. Our um contact person with uh the Language Culture Bureau in establishing that now there are um. One of the discussions that we've had was to find a certified uh. Um Filipino teacher to teach that the language, but it's not to say that we we cannot do that, but we are able to. Um promote that and to get that drive to help our students. And to count that as a heritage program.
Okay, cause I know I brought that up before, um I've asked that same question because. Um obviously, to serve and to be equitable. Uh across the board, we I think we need to certainly. Uh explore that further and be able to try to do that as well. I appreciate that. Um the other one. All the principals understand the importance.
They do understand the importance. This um presentation was um given and provided to them at their principal um. Meeting back in July. And at that time I did this, um it's more uh extensive. Excuse me, it was a more extensive and I I had a um question and answer if they had questions. And um usually the principals, if they have questions, they will answer or ask me or call. Uh so we are available to doing that and I I can tell you that uh for example, T uh. T B A, Dr. Mike, has done a a good job as to. Providing the documentation and asking to questions to ensure that her school has all their. Their documents in in line and I do ha- also have um Dr. Benedict who also provides. Um the details and to ensure that her her paperwork was received. And it also helps them to identify what bomb models they have in their uh schools as far as like heritage and their dual language, of course the. Dual language and also Spanish. We have our Spanish heritage programs that are in Kirtland area.
Okay, cause I I understand that when um. We when we say bilingual, I mean that covers. The different models, obviously, uh in the dual language program and. You can count ninety ten models, dual language program is just construct is a bit different, obviously. So my question is really good to what I asked about the principals is. If they even um comprehend. In respects to. The construct and the structure in and of itself or why it is the way it is. Um I I will not. Um get into. You know, certain aspects of why the question can ask, but um. But my. Concern is again is that uh. There may be some gaps or shortcomings in respects to everyone buying into that program. So but but I do appreciate your due diligence in the work that you're doing, uh you and I, you and I have had these conversations. Along with other people, I C O and I am a very strong supporter of that. Uh because as you all know, it was. You know, I have issue with because of uh. Am I not speaking my native language, which is Spanish because of the time? Um that I was raised, so that's why I'm an ardent supporter of. Uh the native languages being. Within the school system, so I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for your support, uh Board Member Montoya. Thank you for your support, uh Board Member Montoya.
Yes, Ms. Suzette, um Vice President Suzette Haskins, she has no questions, um. My only uh concern, it was, it was pretty much addressed already with Mister uh Montoya. And um it but just that nothing really is in place right now for the Filipino kids um. Not being serviced because there is no Filipino um language teacher yet, but um that's my only. Um comment, but thank you for um the the report and all that your program is doing.
Thank you, um um. Board Member George, but I would like to add a little bit to your question or your comment. We do have that con- that concerned um community member, uh parent. Uh had mentioned that they do have um. Inquiries of how they how they could seek a certified teacher in that aspect, and it's just a matter of. Um diving deep and that's the work that I continue well ex- to to explore and to have definite answers regarding that. Because that is an important question and an important question to be addressed by the community member who. Who um per- approached our department, so. I'd like to add that, thank you.
Great, thank you, thank you for that um for that add-on and um that inclusiveness, thank you so much for that added work, we appreciate it.
I have a question.
Uh go ahead, Mister um Secretary Wells.
Is there, is there own, does that. Mean I'm I'm hearing from your your comments, does that mean that you've only had one request from a from a Filipino parent? Concerning that?
We have, we honor all requests from from our community members as we think that it's important for. Our um um department to explore further options of how we can address and help our students. And we have identified that we do have a large population of uh Filipino students. In the um school district and to serve their needs, so that that was very um. Uh commendable for that community member to really come forward and to let us know. And if we have one piece of the puzzle to be answered there, of course, we will explore all avenues in order to. To get this addressed.
Could there, could there be a uh requisition sent out or a. Uh form sent out asking. For further comments from. Uh members of the Filipino community to see how much interest there really might be?
Uh Board, um Secretary Wells, thank you for that question, uh that is a very good idea and I will discuss this with my supervisor. Um the director, uh Dr. Lopez, and seeing that if that that is a um good, good recommendation and I will take this to her. And we will have a um uh address this and to get more support. And to see what the parental voice is out there, so thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you, um Mister Wells, would you like to take o- take the reins back?
I just barely got my voice, so you're doing well, go ahead.
Okay, we'll move on to um item I, ARP fund. For retention stipends by Mister Donovan Yasi.
Thank you, um Board Member George, members of the board, Superintendent Carlson. Um yes, uh Mister Carlson asked. Um myself, uh as well as the um grants team to look into see if we are able to provide. Um retention stipends as well as a sign-on incentives to our um employees. Um so this is for this coming year, uh one of the things that we've looked into is looking at. Kind of how some other districts have started off use utilizing these types of programs, you know, when they're giving in um. The in- incentive stipends as well as a retention stipend, so um one thing that we've looked at was, you know, since we do have the. The art funds or S three funds, we looked at to see if this was doable and allow under that particular fund. Um so this is kind of a general idea of what that fund is intended for. Um it's intended to provide the um local ed- educational agency, the LEAs with emergency relief funds. To address the impact that COVID nineteen has had and continues to have on all our elementary and secondary schools. So basically, in short, um you know, this has two purposes, um to, you know, prevention to the spread. Of a COVID nineteen as well as response to the impacts um resulting from the COVID nineteen um. Um pandemic. So in order to, we kind of have to dig a little bit deeper with that too, so we got some um information from the um. Frequently asked questions, um this is guidance provided by the um. The um Department of um. Department of Educate, US Department of Education, um as well as guidance from the um. As the CARESAC funds, um you know, this is allowable, there's there's. Under section twenty here, it says other activities that are necessary to maintain the operation and continuity. Of services in the LEA and continue to employ existing staff of the LEA. So that was, that's written within um, you know, the guidance document. Here, um next slide. Um also too, there was a um, um when we looked into um looking at. Uh another another document, I have that link there too as well, so the um. The art funds can be used to provide retention stipends, um also to provide a sign-on incentives for hard to field positions. And so when we looked at the retention stipends, um we, I believe we presented a board last, last year as well. We utilized S two funds for that, um. And I believe last year we we um issued that fifteen hundred dollars to um employees who signed on for the next following school year. Um so basically, in um response to to COVID, you know, we identify staff. Who are to receive this retention stipend, who are continuing to be employed with Central Consolidated School District. Um you know, the final total of what the stipend is gonna be um is dependent on each of the individual's tax allocations. For right now, we are proposing a two thousand retention bonus for certified teaching staff. And all other um staff will um proposal for seven hundred and fifty dollar retention bonuses. In the next slides, um. Um providing the teacher staff retention bonus um as far as teachers go. Um so this would be. Um estimated at um one million twenty nine thousand one hundred and twenty dollars for the teaching staff. And I have listed all the teaching staff positions in the district. And I did retrieve this information from our vision system payroll. Um so these would be the individuals returning, uh receiving the retention bonus um as well. And I am presenting this as a proposal to get the board's input. Um as well to see if um if there's, if they would like to um maybe add some more people. To this two thousand retention stipend here as well, um. Other, other positions, I believe, and the next slide please. Um so I did list all the, um we did list all the other staff. Our retention bonuses, we listed all the positions that would receive it. Um and how many of each of the positions are here within a district, um so. This just kind of lists the the positions, if you go to the next slide. And this group of staff are, there's a total of six hundred and four staff members. And this was gonna um estimated cost the district six hundred and seven thousand dollars. For this group of people to receive the seven hundred fifty dollar retention statement. Um also for the sign-on incentive for our teaching staff for the next following school year, um we are looking at. Um offering a four thousand dollar um. Sign-on bonus, our sign-off incentive for our special education teachers, science teachers, as well as mathematics teachers. Um this would, the proposal is to have it payable and to equal installments during um the one school year. Um basically, some of the steps would be that they have to be hired prior to September first of this school year. And any new hires after September first twenty twenty three will not be eligible for this um incentive. Um they must be a new employee with the school district and not be employed with. CCSV in any positions during this past school year. Um there is an exception for employees who will be moving job class. So if they're moving from an EA to a teacher, they do qualify to receive the um. They would qualify to receive the um four thousand um. Um incentive that there's sa- especially at teacher, science teacher, math teacher. Um and they would have to fulfill their employment contract terms during next school year to receive the full four thousand. Um the other. Um proposal we were at, we are requesting for is uh two thousand dollar sign-on incentive for. All other teaching positions, which also includes our counselors as well, um. It has the same criteria payable to equal installments during the school year, um. If the um the staff must be hired prior to September first two thousand twenty-three. And any new hires after September first twenty twenty-three will not be eligible. Um they must be a new employee and they um they cannot be in a position. This past school year and the only exceptions are for employees who are moving from an EA to a teacher. And the employment contract terms must also be completed in the following year. And so for the estimated cost for these um retention bonuses are incentives and retention stipends. Um you know, are laid out here, it's gonna cost us approximately one point eight million dollars. For all of the retention payouts if we are utilizing the S three funds. And in conclusion, um you know, the S three grants and budget team is asking for your approval of the proposal and input. To move forward with movement of assigning retention stipends and sign-on incentives for the identifying staff. Any questions?
Are there any questions from the board? Go ahead, Mister Montoya.
So. When I make an assumption, we have the funds and under that line to be able to do that quite comfortably.
Board Member Montoya, yes, the the answer is, is yes, we do have that amount of funds in the um. In this particular um grant to cover to cover this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Hasky, Vice President has no questions, Mister um. Secretary Wells, do you have any questions, comments?
I have no questions, um I'd say let's move forward with it, it sounds like uh. A good incentive to provide for our teachers, uh. We need to keep those that we have and recruit any that uh might be interested.
Yes, uh my only question is um for the seven fifty for other staff. Can that possibly be raised to a thousand, um you know, those uh. All the other staff, they are very um. They're just ver- they really step up, um you know, to really fill and positions to help. The, you know, the administration and to help the coordinators and directors, um and. I re- I really feel like through the pandemic and also, you know. Just their everyday duties, um you know, from maintenance to cafeteria to the custodians to. Um the the secretaries that work in the school building, um. Those, uh I I I would really like to see them get a little bit more of a retention stipend. Um you know, seven fifty is is fair, but I think that we could manage um a thousand, I I think that would. Show just a little bit more um heart and appreciation for for our. For our regular staff, that's my only comment, but thank you for the report, um. I also had a question, um Mister Superintendent. Um for the Filipinos that are leaving this year, um. Will they be able to use their leave, their personal leave, sick leave or unused, um you know, if it's unused for, to be. Um monitorized and then also those who are retiring and leaving the district. Who still have some leave left and um unused, are are they able to to take that out? That's probably not part of this, but I'm just wondering.
It's it's kind of not, but I don't mind just going there a little bit, um. Uh Board Member George and and all else who are on this, and that's that's something we've had some discussions about. Uh one of the board members, Mister Montoya, and I have had some. Quite a few discussions about this and and I've had some folks doing research within our district. And I appreciate you asking that question because currently there is nothing in place and there has been nothing in place. I I don't believe ever to 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 allow folks to to get any any kind of pay for their leave. And so and that's one of the reasons why I've asked people to look into this and and. Again, Mister Montoya and myself, we've had some some pretty good questions and. And not necessarily some arguments, but some um back and forth as to, you know, what would make sense, what's what's right and what's not. We both feel like uh sick leave, pay leave is is kind of a property right. That that folks get, so as as our policy stands now. And and I doubt we can get it changed before the end of this year, but uh we are, we really do want to get this changed. And folks who have left the district, I can tell you stories where people have left with um enough hours for hundreds or more days. And and so their choices is they get ready to leave the district, whether it's retiring or just leaving. Yeah, or or they can either burn as many days as they want, which some people do, or they just basically lose that, they just give them back. Um and and we don't think that's fair, so what we'd like to do is put something in place where employees uh are compensated. For not using those days, so when they leave the district. Uh that they actually can get some sort of compensation, sort of like two hundred forty-five day employees do get vacation leave compensated. But that's the only thing we have that's close to that, um there there is one district in our area and that's Bloomfield. Who who does compensate for for days beyond fifty-five days. Which is something that um I'd I'd like to do better than that. But but we are, we are definitely looking into that and I I think that's a great question, I really appreciate you asking that. Um because we have been having those conversations in the district. Uh again, looking into the the districts around us that do that, um and and I think we have a need for, I think it's, we're trying to retain people. Um and and it's also the best thing for kids. Cause if you have somebody who's got twenty days left and they have two months left. We have people who are gonna use as many of those twenty days as they can. And that's not good for kids, so we we do need to, I believe, uh present something to the board as soon as we can. That would allow teachers to to get compensated for those days instead of just having them burned away. So I, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to to answer, again, the the main answer is we really don't have anything in place. And if we're doing things to retain people, uh and and to reward our our teachers that we do have and our employees that we do have. I think we need to look into this a lot more.
Thank you, um are there any more questions or comments from the board?
I have a comment.
Uh go ahead, Mister Wells, Secretary Wells.
I I would highly agree with that, I have known teachers that had. Uh. Left, retired and walked away from uh sick leave time that that they could have. Uh stayed another year and got uh paid for for their. Uh sick, unused sick leave that they just walked away and left it. I think it's uh. I think it's highly unfair uh. To the dedication of a teacher or any employee. Who um. Stays on. Uh on task, I say stay that at the, at the job, doing the job and. And um not taking sick leave and and have to walk away and leave it, I. I have always thought that uh when I was working for the district, thought how unfair that was. Or. Uh some teachers suggested that, well. Uh there's, here's a person over. Uh, there's, here's a person over here that's. That's uh been ill and used up their time, can I donate mine? And and the answer was no, they couldn't. I think, uh, I think something ought to be looked into that.
Thank you, oh, go ahead, sorry.
I have, I have nothing further, sorry.
Um, thank you for your input, Secretary Wells. Um, if there's no further comments or questions, we will move on to J accounts payable dispersments, listing outstanding check listing. Expenditure report and revenue report by Mister Donovan Yazi.
Thank you, um, Board Member George, members of the board, Superintendent Carlson, um, we're moving to the, um. Distribution listing for our operational account for, um, the month of. February, um, the out of the operational expense, there was four million four hundred seventy-three thousand. Dollar, four hundred seventeen-three thousand sixteen dollars and fifty-two cents. Our activities dispersment listing for the month of April, um, thank you, Miss Sharon, for um scrolling down. The items, um. Totalling twenty-six thousand eight hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents. Um, moving on to the, um. The Johnson O'Malley listing for the month of February. Totalling. One hundred three thousand five hundred seventy dollars and ninety-four cents. And we have our outstanding checklist thing for our operational account. Um, totaling six hundred sixty-four thousand three hundred fifty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. And our. Outstanding checklist thing for our activities account, totally two thousand three hundred twenty-five dollars and thirty-three cents. And we're moving to our general funds. Um, for uh accounts eleven thousand through twenty-three thousand. Totally four million two hundred eighty-four thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety-four cents. And our grant expenditures, um. Are totaling two million four hundred seventy-eight thousand one hundred sixty-four dollars and ninety-four cents. And our capital outlay and debt service funds. Totally seven million forty-eight thousand ninety-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. There are revenues. For the, um, general funds. Tolling five million seven hundred eighty-seven thousand six hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty cents. And revenues generated for grants, twenty-four thousand to fund twenty-nine thousand. Are totaling three hundred eighty thousand dollars, seven hundred forty-nine and seventy-three cents. Did I get the right one? Oh, my bad, I'm my apologies, we did the wrong page. Grants revenues for twenty-four thousand to twenty-nine thousand are totaling two million two hundred eighty-six thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars and eighty cents. And revenues generated through our, um, capital outlay and debt services. Um, totaling one hundred fifty-one thousand seventy-five dollars and seventy-one cents. And we have the. Budget adjustments and journal entries. Holding up for last month are four million. Three hundred sixteen thousand eight hundred ninety, eight hundred seventy-nine dollars. And balancing it zero. And all of our checklist, all of our, um, invoice detail information for last month. And journal detail report. For all the expenses out of our accounts. Operational funds totaling four million four hundred seventy-three thousand sixteen dollars fifty-two cents. And I believe the last page also shows all the the funds that. Be, um, that were paid out of the, um, district account lines. Any questions?
Um, are there any questions from the board for Mister Yazi on the, um. On the accounts payable dispersment listing?
I have no questions.
Okay, I ha- I have no questions and Mister Montoya said he has no questions and. Um, Vice President Husky, are you still? Are you still on? Do you have any questions?
She also did not from the chat.
Okay, okay, with that, um, Mister Yazi, you can go on to K procurement over sixty thousand.
Thank you, Board Member George, um, members of the board, Superintendent Carlson, um, we have purchase orders. Over sixty thousand, um. The first purchase order over sixty thousand is totaling. One hundred and sixty thousand. Three hundred twenty-two dollars and thirty cents, I believe this is for the, um, cams and network cabling over at. Cameras and network cabling over at Newcom Element, Newcom Elementary School. Um, the next one is for Saint Tech System Incorporated. It's for sixty-eight thousand nine hundred seventy-eight dollars and ninety cents. This is an upgrade for the, um, cellular services. And it's for the Sourcewell contract. Um, we have another purchase order for the Cooperative Educational Services of New Mexico totaling. Sixty-seven thousand five hundred forty-six dollars and seventeen cents. Um, this is for the fencing over at Mesa. Um, and another purchase order totaling two hundred eighteen thousand nine hundred thirteen dollars seventy-one cents. Um, also for Cooperative Educational Services of New Mexico, this is for the Mesa Heights Unit. Um, four twenty-three. And the next. Um, purchase order over sixty thousand is also to Cooperative Educational Services of New Mexico. This is totaling seventy-nine thousand one hundred thirty dollars. And eighty-eight cents, this is for the Curtland Middle Schools Community Park, um. And, um, the next one on there is the Navajo Tribal Utility Authority. Totalling one hundred seventy-three thousand six hundred sixty-six dollars and eighteen cents, this is for the electrical upgrade. For the property over at Ship Rock. And I believe. Also, another purchase order over sixty thousand, sixty thousand for Cooperative Educational Services of New Mexico, totally ninety-nine thousand. Five hundred twenty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. This work done over at Curtland Middle School again. And then the last one on there is, um, purchase order for Drummers Ford. Totally sixty-six thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars, this is for purchase of a half-ton vehicle, truck. Any questions? From the board or si- purchase orders over sixty thousand?
Are there any questions from the board or comments?
I have none, but thank you.
Okay, Ms. Husky has no questions and I have no questions. With that, we will move on to budget adjustments and journal entries by Mister Yazi, go ahead.
Thank you, Board Member George, members of the board, Superintendent Carlson, we have, um, budget adjustment requests. Um, the first one we have presenting is a transfer bar for our operational account. Um, this is to provide funds, um, for some techno- technology expenditures. Um, for our district, so removing funds around to support the technology department for the plans that are in place. Um. And this one is, the next one is also a transfer. Bar, this is also to, um, transfer. Funds for year-end expenditures. Um, to continue to support the, um, improvements in our technology here with the district. And we have a transfer bar coming from our fifteen thousand one hundred impact aid operational funds. Um, this is to transfer funds for the Security Gate Project in our construction department. Um, we have another transfer bar, um, for you, the use of title funds two four one oh one. Um, this is just to increase the, um. Indirect costs for the school year and to make sure that it's in alignment with what the district is needing to utilize for that particular. Like item. Um, we have here a decrease bar, um, this is a decrease bar for the. Uh, S R two funds, two four three oh eight, the this, the New Mexico Department Educate. Um, Department Education sent out a final award allocation to all the districts and there was. Several districts who received a reduction in budget and unfortunately we were one of them. Um, so there they reduced our carryover award. For the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, um, by one million one hundred forty-four thousand three hundred twenty-eight dollars. Um, we also received another decrease bar for our, um. School and best bus camera fund two four, I'm sorry, two seven four oh five. Um, the state reverted uh twelve thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars and a new allocation amount will be sent out. At a later timeframe. Are there any questions about the, um, budget adjustments and journal entries?
Are there any, um, questions or comments from the board? Ms. Huskies, okay, Ms. Huskies has none either. Mister Montoya? Okay, if there's no other questions or comments, we'll go on to M. Educational Assistant Needs Assessment Survey by Mister Venturina.
Yes, good evening, um, Board Member George again, um, Board Members. And Superintendent Carson and Assistant Superintendent Deswood, um, I'm here to report and to. Discuss and, um, present the educational assistance survey that we had conducted. Um, in the last couple of weeks for for Central Consolidated School District. So we have, uh, some general information in regards with. With our EA's survey, um, so we received fifty-seven responses from. From the, uh, from about seventy to, I think seventy-five, um. EAs all over our school district, um, ninety-three percent are female, eighty-seven percent are Native American. Um, employees, um, the survey timeline from February ninth to fourteen twenty twenty-three. Um, forty percent worked in the special education classes. And twenty-four percent in the regular education classes that also in, um, the. The rest, um, are in the technology, um, EA are as a as a technology EA. Or some of them are also, um, helping as an help EA and, um, library EA. So, um, here is our distribution of EA's or educational assistant in our. School district, you can see, um, um, the majority is coming from. The, uh, current Central High School with seventeen percent, um, eight percent from Judy Nelson. Um, eight percent also from Curtland Mills School. And, um, it's pretty much kind of like, um, distributed throughout the school district and, um, again. It's, you know, the EA's are a need base, um, based on the student needs and, um, school needs. Um, so here are a really great information about how how many years our EA has. Um, total in and outside our or outside, in and outside our school district, so most of our. The majority from of of our EA had from one year to six years experience, but. We also have, uh, you know, EA's that are, you know, up to the forty-two, um, years servicing. Our as a service for our students. So that's the kind of overall experience, um, outs- in and outside C C S D. And the next slide will also tell us the number of experience here. Or their experience here at Central Consolidated School District. So majority of our EA's are in their first to their fifth year. And we also have, you know, a couple of EA's that are serving the school district. You know, twenty-five years to forty-two years and we also have, you know, two, two decades of. You know, serving, um, here at C C S D. So in this questions, um, it it is a question wherein the the EA's are asked, uh, what. You know, type of students in the classroom they are, um. That are working at their, um, expectations. So special education says forty-nine point one percent that students from that group are. Are, um, most likely, almost fifty percent of the response that they are, you know, performing at. A at their expectations. Um, all students are performing to expectations, um, thirty-five point one percent, um, those students who are. Economically disadvantaged are performing at their expectation by twenty-six point three percent. And at the regular ed classroom, which is about twenty-six point three percent. Um, so here in this question, uh, it's kind of like. Uh, asking our our EA's their professional learning experience. And in this question, we ask them in which of the following areas or content areas would. You benefit by receiving more professional development as an educational assistant? We would like to, you know, get their, um, ideas on where they, that we can provide more P Ds and trainings for them. Um, twenty first or twenty or thirty-five percent said they needs help with. Um, the area of language arts, forty percent needs, uh, said that, um, they needed help with mathematics. Um, reading forty-three point nine percent, science twenty-one point one percent, and social studies is fourteen percent. So basically, um, again, you know. If if an E A, the idea is that if an E A had an uh uh. A training in re- in relation to the content areas, they will be able to um help the. You know, regular ed teacher or the special ed teachers in um, you know, in. Helping servicing the students more. So in this um question, we are, we have asked them um in which professional learning areas. Uh, would there um would enhance this their skills as an educational assistant and um. Uh, majority of our E A said that, or fifty six point one percent assisting students with academic. With their academic needs. Um, twenty one point one percent um. Said that they need help or improving their skills in communications with stakeholders. Um, including administrators, parents, community members and and so on. Um. Forty two point one percent um indicated that, you know, it will help them. Um, improve their skills in the use of technology in the classroom, especially. That we had new technologies, high high end technologies that we have implemented and um. Deployed to the throughout the school district. Um, fifty two point six percent of our. E A said that they would need help in improving their skills in managing student behavior. And of course, the the last um area is that sixty three two uh sixty three point two percent. Working with students with special needs and that, you know, kind of like they're specialized um. You know, needs as a as a student with this ability. So as an educational assistant, do you believe that your job description fits your day to day duties? And ac- actually, this is a. Um, kind of like a general question and open ended questions, but we took the, you know, the the. The the most uh majority or the majority of the responses. And ninety three point ninety three percent of of the of the response said that the majority of them. Um, said that their job description fits their daily duties. Um, some of sample responses that we have here. Um, yes, my specific job duties are working with students with special education. I do my best every day to assist each student. Um, yes, because our special ed students need one to one assistance every day. Um, so here's kind of like, I wanted to balance out some of the responses um for this report. Um, no, it's much more complex that job description and we are asked to do much more than our expectations. And uh the second one, no, every day is a new day in dealing with students with medical needs and. We all know that, you know, it's a dynamics as a classroom teacher. Also, I understand that, you know, there's a, you know, dynamics of. School activities and, you know, students having their um. You know, day to day dealings with life and academics and and so on. Um, one P A. Um, indicated, no, our duties change daily to accommodate student willingness and medical needs. And and in this report, uh this is kind of like a. A la- a benchmark, a needs assessment survey for, you know, how to do and how to better serve and assist our. E A and then correspondingly, we'll we'll have a better. Um, understanding and a a better service for our students, especially with. Students with, you know, um, uh special needs. Um, we also come up with some survey um or part of the survey. They rate the importance of pertaining highly qualified educational assistant in your school. Um, one being unimportant and five being unimportant. And most of our, you kind of like our E A's, our staff um said that, you know. Um, professional learning and training related to the job assignment is important for them. Um, few, you kind of like indicated not so important and we will be working with those. Um, uh with those stuff that indicated that it's, you know, kind of like less important. Um, classroom resources and supplies, we have uh um, I think majority of our E A's um think that those are. Um, very important um sources. In order for them to perform their 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 job and and their duties. Uh, of course, supporting the teachers, their classroom teachers. Um, supporting, support from district and school administrators. So there's kind of like a, like a a. Variability that happened there, but I think most of. Uh, more than fifty percent of our our responses um saying that it's it's very important. For for them um to recognize and being supported by the s- school district and school administrators. So on this question, we have, on the scale of one to five. How would you rate your working relationship with other certified certified teachers? Um, again, um majority thirty one, thirty one of them or fifty four point. Four percent indicated that they have excellent um relationship. Thirty one point six percent said that they have a kind of like um. You know, almost excellent and, you know, we have a range of um, you know, one to six. That's that's in the middle and, you know, not having s- uh a good relationship with their with the certified teachers. Um, so here are some of the additional comments. We did have a a part where they can, you know, make comments or. You know, other suggestions or anything that they think that we needed to know. Um. So it, here are some of the comments from our um E A's. Thank you for providing the platform for us to input and voice our s- our needs and concerns. I enjoy my position and hope to return in and to in twenty twenty three, twenty four school year, which we are also excited for that. Uh, uh, you know. Wh- when the time comes. I would like more trainings like regular teachers because I sub in different classrooms. We need a raise for all that we do. We do part of all jobs in in our buildings and I believe that there is a. An ongoing legislation in regards with um educational assistant salary that will level up the. You know, the the compensation for our E A's. Um, E P O administrators should need to go classroom to see first hand it. Uh, where concerns are needed and we did, um, we're going to uh communicate that to all the departments, not just with the E P O. I think this is a collaborative um effort to support all our E A's, um, you know. Ac- across the school district. And and it need to be, uh, you know, kind of like the special ed um E A's um to give more um. Support and trainings, um, we will will be, we'll be planning after, you know, this presentation and after. Um, you know, analyzing more deeper our our results of the of the survey. So second to the last, I am enjoying being a teletherapist assistant. I'm working with a nice, understanding, respectful f- person. She tells me every day that I'm doing a great job assisting her with students. We need more teachers like this that praise you every day. I'm sure E A's don't get praised like this. And lastly, working with high need students with an I E P this year was a challenge. For me mentally and physically, I was never trained or given opportunity to enhance my skills in that particular field. And again, um, these comments are s- are very significant and relevant. To what we will, you know, do in the future and planning ahead with, you know, different services and ways for us to um. Support our educational assistant and as I said, you know, um. As as a result to that, it's better serving our students um in in general. And I think that's the last part of my report or my presentation. But um I w- I asked Mister Carson, Superintendent Carson, that I can um share. The result to all our our board members to to get access to, you know, the additional comments. I can't, I can't put all the comments here, but I I put some of, you kind of like. The similar responses all together in 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 one slide. So other than that, I have, I I stand for questions and um.
Question?
Go ahead, Mister Montoya.
Actually, for the superintendent. Yes, sir. Oh, in regards to some of the comments that were made about training and education. Um, I've always believed that the E A's. Uh, could be and should be. Um, dealt with in respects to. Developmental opportunities for prospective educators, especially. As it relates to a a sort of a an apprenticeship program. That we would certainly. Benefit ourselves by doing what we can to educate them as much as possible to be able to assist in that classroom. And then again, reaching out to those that truly want to be able to grow. And consider to win that be- so they could become teachers. Especially when you have very effective educators in those classrooms with those E A's. That's a pristine opportunity to to uh try to develop them into educators.
Was there a question in there?
Oh, more of a comment than that, just what you would think about doing that or if that's even a consideration.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay. Yeah, okay, uh I I was I was hearing what you're saying and agreeing with every bit of it. You know, that's one of the problems we have with educational assistance and and the the. The times that they're there, um they they are not able to go to all the trainings the teachers do. Um, and and what what you've kind of brought out there is super important because. You know, we have usually like five days before the school year starts. Those E A's who want to become teachers, why wouldn't they be at all those trainings? Um, and so, you know, again, that's that's a great point. Um, and that's something we need to make sure that we give them the opportunity and pay them when that happens, obviously. So again, I meant, I I wasn't sure about the question, but it's great comment and and we'll definitely. Work on that. I d- I've looked at this survey and and some of the results in here, um. We need to have some conversations about them. Uh, especially one of the additional comments. I'm not gonna bring it up right now, but I I know you can see all of them, so.
Well, no, I I I absolutely agree and I know what you're alluding to, so. And again, we certainly need to make sure we're trying to. Possible prospective educator that we can and and doing that. Uh, obviously, the people in the classroom need to be cognizant and aware of that. Of and their opportunity to be able to shape and mold to prospective educators as well.
Yes, sir, and you know, and some of the comments here, um, I I I feel like we we don't have. Uh, we don't always do a good job of acknowledging education assistance. I think I think all of all of our staff, but. Definitely, there's some folks here who um. They they do enjoy praise and they they do enjoy uh the the money that goes along with the with that, so. Anyway, we have some work to do with our educational systems.
Are there any other comments from the board or questions?
Miss George, can I provide a little bit of background or comment as well?
Uh, go ahead, Mister Deswood.
Yeah, so I I just wanted to add that um, uh, you, the evenings I do adjunct for Dine College. Uh, and I actually have, I've adjunct for them uh for the inception of their. Teacher preparation program in response to the Ya'zi Martinez. I think it's called the Northwest New Mexico Education Teacher Pr- uh Program. And I do know several, uh, there's, we're on our fourth cohort. And each year, there's two to three E A's who have uh transitioned to receiving their their. You know, their bachelor's and their teaching certificate. In fact, we have one at. Currently, that's uh doing his student teaching at Kirtland Elementary School to become a certified teacher. So the, so a lot of the stuff that we're looking at in in this presentation. Uh, that's the goal is to get them to be certified. I think that's what. Uh, the programs that we saw earlier about Grow Your Own, uh, that's that's part of that training. Um, so just add a little bit of background to that. There is a, there is a, there is a a. Uh, concerted effort to get those E A's uh moved into the profession because. Uh, they they do have a wealth of knowledge. Uh, they knew, they do know. Uh, they do see and observe uh quality teachers teach, so they do have. That understanding and that real world experience. Um, Miss George, I I see um Miss Hasky's comment in the or question. In the uh chat, may I answer that question as well?
Uh, yes, let me just read it real quick.
Okay.
Um, it says, miss from Miss Hasky. Can you give a report on what types of training you're planning for the E A's? I think those. Other areas like de-escalation or behavioral modification type of trainings are necessary for the E A's. I really want to make sure that they feel equipped for all situations.
So let me, let me a- add a little bit uh to that as well. So if um E A's are are part of a crisis team. An intervention team, they are, they do um take uh do nonviolent uh training as well. It's a part of the crisis training, I know the specific name, I believe. Uh, Mister Vol- Ver- Verhols is on the um in here, he'll, he can.
Said C P I.
C P I training, exactly. Uh, C P I training, um, even as a principal, I would take. Uh, my staff and including E A's um and and um actually my registrar as well. To C P I training, uh, they did get those uh, that type of training and I I I know, I'm not too sure if Miss uh. If um Amanda Sutherland is on here or one of her staff. But I I do know E A's also receive a training uh specifically. Regarded to supporting students uh who have I E Ps, um, so just add a little bit to answer that question. Uh, thank you.
Miss George.
Uh, yes, go ahead, Mister Venturina.
Yeah, so I just wanted to, um, there's two things that I'd like to um kind of like um. Add to this, um, I think I have mentioned um health aides. Earlier as part of this, actually, our health aides are not part of the uh educational assistant job classification. And I think I misspoke because I just, you know, kind of like I'm thinking that the same, you know, kind of like area, but um the health assistants are not. Um, educational assistant. And the second thing that I'd like to share also further to that and I I thank Mister. Deswood for jumping in is, um, you know, there are ongoing um trainings and I know some of the schools. A specific schools that have been um receiving trainings for students with special needs on. It kind of like the autism spectrum and and things like that. And we are, we have an ongoing, we have those ongoing trainings for. For our E A's and of course, our teachers and staff at large to support. You know, every students, uh, uh, all the general ed students and our students with with. With special needs. And having this um result of the survey will give us more leverage on how to. Be better on those trainings and provide more support for uh for our educational assistance. So just kind of like adding that to our um discussion points, but thank you.
Yes, uh, thank you. Um, we, uh, Miss. Miss Hasky said she would like to, she would like that to be district wide since there are few really low ratings. Uh, anybody else have any comments or questions from the board?
Uh, my only um comment would be just to reiterate what was already all shared. Um, you know, support for the education advancement of E A's, you know, to gain their bachelors. Or their um associates to bachelors or even their masters or P H D um. Degrees and then, you know, talking about this, how more creative we could be in supporting. The educational assistants um in becoming teachers and then, um, you know. And like the questions that were asked there, um, you know, that seven fifty going up to a thousand would be. Would be a really good um incentive to show the E A's. For their hard work and their their diligence and going above and beyond and also being in that. In that one on, one on one or w- or working with these students and, you know. Dealing with physical, you know, um. Situation sometimes that have to be de-escalated, it's 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 hard and um so. Um, thank you for that presentation, Mister Venturino, uh, that those um. Those numbers and data are. Speak for itself and I I really appreciate that um that data. It's very, very good information. Good work.
I I do have a one more further question.
Oh, go ahead, Mister Montoya. Go ahead.
So Superintendent. Sir. Uh, in regards to the E A's and especially some of those, I mean, obvi- obviously, all the positions are crucial, but. And they provide a very needed service and we've talked about the expanse of that before. Um, through third grade in every single classroom, but um. What would be the possibility? What would be the possibility? Of let's say even sending some of them to some of the professional development that the teachers go to? To help uh equocate uh in those processes of education or even regards to uh. Special education services.
It's a great, uh, great question, and and I appreciate that, I think, I think we should do that. Um, there's no reason why we wouldn't send them to some of the same op- opportunities because they're working with the same students. Especially uh special ed, um, EAs, but but any of them. And and I I I do agree with that, any types of training to be sent to them, we should avail them of those same opportunities, so appreciate that.
Uh, Mr. Carlson. Um, if you would, may we um possibly hear from Miss Sutherland? On on her, um, what what her thoughts are on the EAs?
I have no problem with that, and I know she's on online, I want to make sure she's knowing that she's being called upon there. Miss Sutherland, uh, feel free to chime in when you're ready.
Good evening, Board members, um Superintendent Carlson. Um, so we have been, um, actually meeting with, um. The educational assistants on the Friday, those early release days. And, um, so my team, Joel Ballasby, um, Tasha Fernandez, Kim Nockai. And Anne Cluth Clark and Becky Brandt, they've all put trainings together and, um, we did open it up. To all EAs, we didn't make it mandatory, but we had a large, um. Group participate. And then, um, we do surveys after the training just to get their feedback and they all really appreciated it and, um. So we've continued and also started a, excuse me, a professional learning community as well. So they'll meet and they'll talk about, um, mostly right now what they're needing help with is, um. The behavior management part, because we've been, um, doing a lot with that at all levels. Um, pre-K through high school, so. We can report out on those in the, um, end of training surveys. If that is what Miss Hasky's looking for, we can, um. Talk about how that's been going, but we were very. We were, um, very happy to have the kindergarten or kindergarten EAs and the pre-K EAs all wanting to participate with. Uh, special education, so that was, that was good, um, training for them.
Uh, great, thank you, Amanda, for that, um, for that review and information. Um, and thank you, Mr. Carlson, for letting her speak, uh, Miss Hasky has said. Are EAs assigned to particular teachers throughout the year? Or do they float to where they where the need is? If they are assigned to a particular teacher, can they as a team do s- some team development type of trainings to strengthen teamwork?
I'll go ahead and and field that, I don't know if Amanda wants to jump in as well. Um, you know, basically, we have several types of EAs, usually. A, uh, for instance, there's EAs work in a kindergarten classroom or a first grade classroom, and they do tend to stay with that teacher. Generally, uh, and and they're there to to lighten the load, so to speak. And so absolutely, kind of the PLCs that the Sutherland is referring to. Are opportunities where the EAs could do with those teachers to whom they are assigned. Uh, we also have uh special education EAs, we have some who are one-on-one, not too many of those. Um, but then others who are working with different groups of students and they work with two or three different teachers. But so there's quite a few different arrangements, but yes, um, I would say there's probably more who work with one teacher. And then there there are quite a few also who do some float, I mean, if you if you saw that survey, there were quite a few different answers there. There are some who might go uh to several different classrooms in a day. And and others follow a group of students, uh, work with a particular group of students, so. Hopefully, does that answer your question? Let me check the chat here. Good deal.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments from the board? If there's not in, okay. If there's not any more comments or questions, we'll move on to in graduate profile update by Mr. Peter Deswood.
All right, good evening, can you all hear me? Just double checking.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, all right, perfect, so let me go ahead and share my screen, uh, thanks for giving me access. Again, thank you, uh, Board members, uh Superintendent Carlson and colleagues and any guests who are online. Uh, so I'm going to provide an update of uh where we are with the graduate profile, um, so. In previous years, uh, this this uh seal that you see here is the the. I guess the artwork, a student drew this and created this, and this is the seal that is utilized by the district for the uh graduate profile. Uh, survey data was completed, uh, what does the data say? Well, there was sixteen hundred and two respondents, that's quite an extensive, uh. That's quite extensive uh amounts of information. Uh, that that was collected in, you know, the 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 previous uh group that worked on the the graduate profile, I know they went. Quite extensively into the various different communities to to interview. Um, individuals, parents, community members, stakeholders and students to gather this information. Uh, this is how the information broke down, I know some of this was presented to you all. In previous years, uh, previous uh board meetings, so I'm not gonna go too much into the data. Uh, so the here's what the uh adults uh wanted, uh, whenever they saw. You know, whenever students left our district, these are the areas, these are the bullet points. Uh, some of the skills, some of the programs, um, some, um, you know, some some. Activities, um, that they want our students to leave, uh, the our school district, uh, you know, when they graduate. Uh, this is what students say they want help with, again, uh, very similar skills, very common to the. To the previous uh slide as well, a lot of skills, I mean, a lot of times we call these twenty-first century skills, soft skills. Um, again, uh, you s- you see these, uh, our students want to be college-ready, uh, they want to have skills. Ready uh uh for whether they go into the military, whether they go into the workforce. Whether they go into uh college, maybe they go to a certificate program. Or or they just, you know, get a job, so these, these are things that, um, our students, um. That our students uh want some more help with. Uh, they also stated that this is, these are some other areas they wanted assistance with. Now, if you think about some of the trips and some of the awards that are being received. Um, since I've been, um, in in the school district these, uh, nine months, eight months. You see robotics and coding, right, you see, uh, welding of uh in in auto mechanics. Uh, I I recently saw on the CCSD uh web website where the FCC LA. Uh, won a competition, our robotics team at our Newcom has won competitions. So a lot of the things that we see on here that students wanted, that has been emphasized and. Um, a lot of the the work that is being done within the district is based on this information that was gathered from. From our stakeholders, our our families, our parents, and most importantly, our students. What the graduate profile do- does is it puts the students at the center of education, I mean, every one of us is here for these kids. Every one of us is here to support and add value. Uh, Mr. Montoya, I know you're you're you have very, very, always emphasize business, um, concepts, well. Our our school, we, I call it the value-added, um, I have a business background as well. So we are adding value by all of the programs that we have in place. Uh, a a wordle was done, um, again, you know, these the words that are larger, uh, those words are the ones that were most, uh, ex- that were expressed. Uh, most numerously, so communication is is a big, uh, a big word, life skills, culture. Financial literacy, self-advocacy, um, many of the programs that we that. The, you know, the presenters like Miss Lunt Hill talked about, or Mr. Saluderos, they talked about students advocating for themselves. They talked about students, uh, um, persevering. Uh, they wanted them to to, you know, we we in education, we talk about self-efficacy, right, uh, students' ability to know that they can complete something. All of these themes, all of the programs that we have are aligned to this graduate profile, uh, so. After all of that information that was collected from those sixteen hundred and two individuals. What, well, um, what they said was, in order for our students, when they leave and graduate and have a diploma. They want four things, self-identity, I mentioned that earlier. They want to know who they are, where they fit into the world, uh, they want, they want to see how they are engaged in. Their community and how they partner with the community, but likewise, it's not just one way. Because our community stakeholders, the hospital, the Navajo Nation, uh, the businesses in Kirtland, they 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 participated in this. Um, information gathering, uh, and they had input as far as. When our students graduate, this is the skills that they need. Um, in their businesses or their organization, uh, the second one is holistic wellness. Mental, physical, emotional and, um, environmental and health. So you think about our social emotional learning, our packs, our seven mindsets, our capturing kids' hearts. Those are directly tied to holistic wellness, okay, we want. And not only that, but the thing, uh, and one thing is my previous, uh, in my high school. We also did a lot of cell, social emotional learning because. It embedded in cell is, you know, we 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 want to get our students to be talking. To come out of their shell and talk and because that's a skill that's very important in twenty-first century. Uh, communication and collaborating with, uh, with their team or colleagues or friends, okay? Building My Future, again, college and career-ready, uh, mentorships, internships. We haven't put work-based learning on here, but that is gonna be a um, an essential component of this graduate profile. Also additionally, skill mastery, uh, not just academics, but life and communication skills. Um, having, being able to persevere, it's so interesting, uh, I used to teach mathematics in 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 the middle grades. And one of the things that we always pushed, actually, one of the, one of the eight math practices was perseverance, right? It's interesting how that pops up on here, skill mastery. We want people to persevere when they, when things get hard, and that's what we're trying to teach with these. With these four tenets, guiding principles, uh, we even call it, and then the last one is grit, okay? Now, what I did, let me, let me, before I share the next screen, I actually met mo- um, recently with, um. The four depart- the four academic departments, um, ICO, SSO, CNI and DART. And what we did was we aligned every program that we have and how it supports self-identity. Cultural and language, um, engagement in the community, uh, working with the partners. So if you look at each, every one of these, when we are going through this, a lot of these, uh, were were evident in multiple. Uh, um, tenants. If it wasn't, I, you know, uh, you know, whenever you start to reflect on it, you start to say. If 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 it's not evident in multiple areas, is that program beneficial to what our community wants? Right, so we start to question that, um, I know, um, Mr. Montoya in in a previous meeting. Uh, in a previous work session, you talked about quantifying how coordinators, uh, support. Well, I I, that question spurred, because a a lot of the support that we're seeing in these, uh, four academic areas. We have our coordinators who track their time based on the number of support hours that are given to the school. So if if we definitely can quantify is 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 what I'm saying, but you think, you look at all of these. All of these, um, areas that that support this this tenant of self-identity. As you can tell, just just to see it, um, uh. Um, CNI, cell, seven mindsets, capturing kids' hearts, um, access, uh, ATL. Um, access, uh, Avant Stamp, there's all these programs that provide support. To creating a student who understands where they fit into this world, but not only where they fit. But how they can impact this world, okay, and and not only the world, but our communities most importantly, okay? So here's holistic wellness again, all these programs, like, I mean, look at this McKinney-Vento, right? McKinney-Vento with i- in in the food pantry, we're trying to make sure our students are ha- are have physically have food, in fact. I was walking down the hallway just today, uh, go, uh, to go talk with Dr. Lopez. And we s- I saw a family had had a little, had more like four or five bags of groceries, right? Because we want our, we don't want our students to go without, right, you you look in DART, right, student nutrition report, reporting, log entries. We want our students to feel safe. Just recently, um, I started sharing, um, student infraction data by school with principals. DART is the one that captures all that information to be shared. Uh, SSO, you know, um, IEPs, behavior, health support. CAT, non-clinical, all of our nurses, capacity builders, I mean, capacity builders is a community. Um, organization that we have partnered with to help support. Mental, physical, emotional health of our students, so, uh, so that's a holistic wellness. Uh, the next area is building my future, again. Every one of those programs that you heard that you, even actually this whole year, every one of these field trips that. That that our teachers and our sponsors come to the board for approval and for IEC. Um, you know, IEC also approves some of these, uh, for funding, but every one of them. Is indicated in this ma- in this, um, matrix here, all right, like even, I mean, you think about it. Here it is, FCC LA, FFA, fax, robotics, gifted and talented. PMS Head Start, I'm just going through multiple, I know you you all have access to this. Exiting our our English language learners, the state bilingual seal, whether Spanish or Navajo. Our indigenous fashion show gathering of royalties, because in each of those programs, we're trying to build. And and to expand and and create students so that they know what their next steps are going to be after high school, after they leave. They're twelve or, you know, twelve years with us, some thirteen, some fourteen, right, but they get done. So this is another metric or another matrix where it shows all the programs that we. Our are are supporting and utilizing to to support our kids, uh, to get to that next step. Lastly, skill mastery, very similar. Each of these programs were evident in each of them, because when our teachers like Miss Lunt Hill, Mr. Saluderos. Miss, uh, Miss West, when they come to you, you know, they have to tie it to standards, they have to have lesson plans assigned to it. Well, that's how it's aligned, as you can tell in here, and even in the previous, the K-12 curriculum, right? We want our students to master that K-12 quo- K-12 curriculum, right? We want them to have to be have dual credit courses, even though it's a high school requirement. We have multiple kids who, we have quite a few kids who have, who who can, you know, who don't just take one dual credit, who take multiple dual credit. And I think Miss Lunt Hill commented earlier tonight that her student will be, you know, graduating with a certificate while graduating high school. Well, that's pretty common now because of the emphasis, uh, made, um, you know, working with San Juan College or. Navajo Technical University to support our four tenants here, okay? So where are we right now? Well, we have all the components of the graduate profile in place. Um, I I took over the graduate graduate profile at the end of January twenty twenty-three. So with the academic team, academic planning team, we are aligning the components, and and by the way. It's not an easy task, right, the the gathering the data is not an easy task because. It's making sure all of our programs are aligned to those four tenants, okay? So that again, there's there's a re-implementing of that profile. Uh, Mr. Grohl and I are focusing on using those career interest surveys to create pathways, so in the previous school I was in. Right, master schedules could not be completed unless you have student interest surveys. Stating what particular courses those students needed, so, um, even programs, a lot of the programs that we're going. Uh, uh, board members are here in here in a couple of weeks, uh, there's a contingent of uh teachers and and, um. Administrators and some coordinators who are going to, uh, to look at a program. And it's called the Deeper Learning Conference, which it's about project-based learning, right? When students are project-based learning, every one of those four tenants that we talked about that our community or students wanted. It checks that every one of those boxes off, it builds collaboration, um, there's there's teamwork building. There's, they're gonna be conducting, uh, these units that students are gonna be engaged in. There's a uh in-product that the community benefits from. So those those are some things that are coming down, uh, down the road in the next couple of months. Um, also, some other next steps, uh, uh, Mr. Gro- Gro- Grohl and I are, um. Um are are meeting and then gonna utilize future-focused education uh to fully implement, not only the graduate profile. But capstone projects, okay? And work-based learning, that's why I said we haven't put these on there yet, because one. Capstone and work-based learning are not a part of what we do right now, but that's the direction we're going. Uh I don't know, I don't know if you recall on some of those um indicators that students wanted, they want help with. Resumes, right? They want help with um uh um, they want work-based learning experiences. Because whenever we put work-based learning experiences, it's it's one task that they can start and work to to build a resume, okay? Again, working with the academic planning team and principals to ensure that the graduate profile is fully implemented. And I've been talking about this throughout the entire presentation, but aligning programs and pathways. To our four pillars of self-identity, holistic wellness, building my future and skill mastery, okay? Again, the students that we see on our screen. You know, a lot of times, school districts focus on, we gotta get our kids done, okay? There's been a shift, right, since this graduate profile came about, there's a shift where we're not just worried about getting kids done. We're intentionally planning our programs so that. They're ready for their next steps. Once they receive that diploma that you all hand out. They're ready to go into the workforce, they're ready to go into the military, they're rel- ready to go to college or university. Or they're ready to go to a certificate program, okay? So that's what that that paragraph, little sentence is talking about. Thank you uh for allowing me to do this presentation, um uh board members, I did give this presentation also to the I E C. Uh committee uh two nights ago, and Mr. Carlson also would like me to give this presentation. Uh to the uh the regional um uh Navajo Nation Council Meeting on Saturday morning. Uh but I do have, I do stand for questions, thank you.
Thank you for that presentation, uh go ahead, Mr. Montoya.
So um. Mr. Deswood. Do you understand that this uh commitment was made to the communities right back in twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two? During the inception of the program and then going into the communities, correct?
Yes, sir, I do. In fact, um I've actually went through this process uh creating this. Are the ideal graduate um in in my high school. Uh and we had started that work in twenty seventeen. Uh so that I I believe that's why, that's why it was handed over to me be- because I do have experience with uh. Implementing uh such an extensive uh program. Um and and of course, Mr. Carlson having um, you know, faith in in my abilities to lead this and Dr. Lopez as well. Uh but yes, absolutely, I understand the the immensity of uh of what this entails. Um but but as you can see, there's, there's a lot that goes on. And and I'm not taking credit for for any of 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 the work that's been done. But a lot of the things that we're doing and we've been doing are aligned to this graduate profile, so it is up and running. Now, not ev- not everybody might know what it is, um you know, because of, because of uh. Because of turnover, but again, I think that's something that we need to emphasize. And and uh you know, make sure that vision and mission is is uh and get, and that commitment is is there at the beginning of each year.
Okay, and I say that because. Obviously, the preliminary data was presented to us in July, and basically, I think it was July or August of twenty twenty two. Uh with a uh implant implementation plan. And so my question would, part of that question would be, you know, I wanted to know how it went because full implementation. Should have occurred at the beginning of uh this school year, which is twenty twenty two into twenty twenty three. And now I see that you had on your your slide that it's gonna be re-implemented. So that kind of makes me pause and wonder. Had we even started implementing it from when we said we were with all the information that we had? So. Again, you know, I I have questions in my mind, there's. Instructional programs, um how that was developed by CNI. Um what professional development was there, or how was that aligned and developed to include uh performance assessments? Those types of things.
If, if.
And again, from what you've said, it hasn't, obviously. Um it was supposed to have been implemented in the beginning of the school year of twenty twenty two. So the bigger question is. How how are we gonna uphold our commitment to our stakeholders if we're, one, realigning? Two, haven't even fully implemented the program?
Uh that's a really good question, and uh you know, to answer it, so there there's, there's. The pieces and the components are there. Uh there's this, there's, yeah, I mean, I'll I'll be honest with you, the ball was dropped, right, the ball was dropped. Uh in. That's why it was handed over to me, uh because, you know. I said, uh there there was community of practice, uh that was, that was, the staff members attended. And um, yeah, that's, that's. All all all, I mean, I I wish I could answer your question in more depth. Um be, but you know, uh. Uh um prior to end of January, uh when it was uh gifted to me. I hate, I hate to laugh about it, but like it it was just handed over to me. Um prior to that, I was, I was focused on on making sure our principals had the capacity to lead their buildings. But it it only made sense, I'll be honest with you, it only made sense that that it was uh um under the assistant superintendent. Because the assistant superintendent um oversees or supervises the principals. Uh so there was a disconnect right there. Um but rest assured, going forward, uh that the ball will not be dropped, um. Uh I I do, I do take this very serious because of, because of the implications, right? We want our students, and the reason why I say i- it um fully implemented is because. Everything that should be done, our ninety-day plans that are written. That's why I was saying earlier that i- it it makes sense for this assistant superintendent to oversee it because. Uh these components that we see, we should see direct evidence and it should be. Uh smart goals should be written based on these programs, how they're implemented, if they're fully implemented. Uh so I hope that answers your your question, um, Mr. Montoya.
Well, yeah, and I appreciate the fact that you just admitted that the ball was dropped. And again, I'm not gonna sit here and point the finger or two because uh that wouldn't be fair, but in respects to. Again, the bigger commitment to the communities that we went into, uh and I'm pretty certain. You know, just from the perspective of being a parent. You can hear the questions or the comments being made, okay, here we go again, what are they gonna do about it? Well, inevitably, at this point in time, there I say. Nothing, because again, we're having to reinstitute. But when you're talking about those components and. How does that, give me an example of how one of those components would actually translate into a uh. Viable. Curriculum.
Absolutely, I I, and that's a, that's a good question. And I, uh so with whatever that, whenever we see those uh that the, the um spreadsheet, those uh the matrix. So whenever you look at those programs, those, those programs are identified in multiple, uh you, one of the four tenants. So that's why I said, maybe, maybe, maybe I shouldn't use re-implemented, maybe it should be recommitted. Because it's, the framework is there, we're, the district is utilizing uh the graduate profile. But the thing is, we have new principals in 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 our district over the last couple of years. Well, that vision and that, that North Star was not created with with those leaders. So then, that's, that's where the disconnect happened. Um a- and again, we do, we do have some, some of our, some of our other key people, I mean. There was, there was meetings, meetings happened, it's just, it's just there was, there was a disconnect. Uh but but uh many of those programs that we see uh are aligned, I mean. You know, you, I know Ms. Huckman is getting ready to do a presentation here about uh the, the history, um the curriculum adoption, right? Well, that takes a concerted effort uh from the community and the CNI to get, to vet it, to vet those programs. Uh so there's a lot of buy-in and there's a lot of commitment from them and and for them to do some of the heavy lifting. And that's essentially what the graduate profile does, is we each have a hand in this, that's why I made the comment earlier that. That this is, this is the, this is important, this is important work that needs to be happened, that needs to happen. Um and and, you know, i- i- I mean, in in all honesty, i- it could really be our strategic plan. Uh because, I mean, everything, every one of us does is, you know. We're trying to create a self-identity, right? We're trying to create skills, we're trying to build students' futures. And we want kids to leave mentally, emotionally, and have a strong um holistic well-being. Uh but but I I guess, I hope that answers your question, uh Mr. Montoya.
Yeah, well, again, in respects to some of what you said. Uh the commitment that we have as board members. To the outcomes of our students, especially regarding graduate profile is huge because. Um. And again, not to put the onus on you or or one singular individual, but. Now we have another full class of of students leaving high school from. Our communities that um were not served in a manner in which we, again, committed to. And and dare I say, um Mr. Deswood, that. I I think that um when you talk about the the change in the leadership, obviously. What's transpired in the last year and a half is indicative of that, um at the highest level with the superintendency, but. That notwithstanding the importance of what we do as a district committed to our. Uh stakeholders, it's an imperative to ensure that we're doing everything we can to help these. Students leave with the necessary tools, just as you said, to be productive. Um so if I may, can you? Give me um. An example of, and I don't know what your construct is, uh. A planning committee, or you have people, just your principals, who's actually helping you construct? Um this process?
Okay, so it it's, of course, is a team effort, uh academic planning, uh working with principals, uh I mean, just, just today. Uh and yesterday, uh working with um. Um ICO and CNI and talking about summer programs, uh which, you know. There's, there's, there's been an emphasis on getting ready for next year. Right? Making sure we have programs in place, in fact, that's one of the things that I challenged principals recently and and staff is. You know, uh uh are our schools good enough? To, for for you to send your own kids to? And if the answer is no, then we need to make changes, right? There there is, there's a priority that needs to happen. And tha- that's exactly what we're doing. Um some other evidences, you look at, you look at that cell, right? That's that social emotional, the packs, the seven mindsets, that's a direct response to have students who are who who are. Have a whole, have a holistic, um are who are holistically um balanced, okay? Um so I I guess with that, that that's, that's, that's the way, that's the way we look at it, that's the way, you know, it's, it's, it's definitely. Uh a shift and a change of mindset of uh of how things um have been done. Um but 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 I, I know with the support of uh Mr. Carlson and the board, I know you all have been. Very supportive of of a lot of the work that we're doing. But that's why we're moving in a positive direction, right? That's why when we presented uh data last month, that's why there's growth. Things we're doing, they're not happening for no reason, we're intentionally doing things, right? Staff are being held more accountable, um principals are being held more accountable. In fact, I met with a principal, and one principal was like, was my job on the line? Well, not yet, but you know, but but it creates, it creates um urgency, and that's what we need. And um you know, that that's what, that's what the graduate profile is, it's, it's our ideal graduate. And I I I'm not gonna say that we we failed kids because um our kids are, our kids are, our, our kids are achieving, they've, they've just. They've just exited a pandemic and they've, you know, they're, they're. Yeah, they, yeah, they may be behind, but you know what? Kids grow exponentially, right? And I'm I'm very optimistic uh that we can, we can move forward and and and. And grow, that's those, that's what our indicators are showing. Um you know, part of it is 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 using data, the, these are, these are data-driven decisions, I mean. Mr. Venturina just presented data, right? That's a big, that's a, that's our, that's our, our base point. So now, we can assess where we're at here in, you know, mid-year. Very similar, because we want our employees to feel safe, right? Very similar um with uh principals, I gave them a beginning of year uh survey about. You know, how they're, how they are with their job, if they feel supported. And, you know, um gave it to them mid-year again, because we're looking at growth. We're looking at metrics uh to quantify our student achievement. Um and and a lot of the work that we do, um you know, data-driven decision-making, that that's what we're, we're trying to instill right now. So thank you for that um question, and of going, it takes you board members pushing us, it it takes you board members pushing us. And asking tough questions for us to improve because we then ask our principals. We then ask our staff these tough questions, in fact, as soon as I got off the board meeting, the next day. I met with the CNI coordinators and I said. Can you quantify how you impacted student growth? And then we had to think about it, then guess what started coming out? Oh, we have, we track our hours with the schools that we go to. And when we start tracking hours and we have a school that's not improving and not showing growth. We have a tough conversation with that principal saying, the recommendation is, you need to meet with these coordinators, they're specialists. Um but but just, I hope that answers your question, uh, Mr. Montoya.
Um I I appreciate that. And um, one of the other. I believe. Components to to that graduate profile would be uh Naviance. Um has that been incorporated into the process? And if it has, what training has occurred? What level has it been implemented uh within the schools since it was introduced in twenty one, twenty two?
Uh I'm glad you asked that, so the last meeting I was in, it was sixty-five percent um fully implemented. Um I know um Michelle Moncay Gill, uh Ms. Dr. Lopez. Uh Mr. Venturina and myself were in a meeting with uh Naviance trying to implement it. And and I mean, that's, that's one data point, I remember I talked about student interest surveys. Um I used to use Naviance data to pull, pull information on to create my master schedule for for my high school last year. Uh but I mean, sixty-five percent, I mean, that that that's, we we gotta figure out what what's going on there, that's where. Uh Mr. Venturina and I, um you know, we have a meeting scheduled with Naviance here within the next week. To make sure that that's um. I guess, fully implemented, not a guess, but it's fully implemented.
Okay. So. I know that um. Initially. That. Process. Graduate profile um emanated from the ICO department. And, you know, I've done and perused around the state in respect to who else is, I know Zuni. South of us is implementing it, I know uh Bratton up in the northeast corner of the state is utilizing it. Look at their questions and what they believe it's supposed to do and how it's supposed to work. So my question really is to you, uh Mr. Deswood is. Once you were gifted, as you said. This uh fine gift of graduate profile. Um. You, did you happen to go back to a source where it emanated from to get guidance or? Fully understand what was occurring, what had occurred, how it occurred, uh what the responses were, other than, dare I say, just a.
Uh yes, sir, I did, because you know, it takes a lot of, it takes a lot of researching, a lot of asking questions, there's a, you know. Asking tough questions and, you know, what's going on, where is this at? Um, most importantly, meeting with with the departments. Um asking them questions about programs, asking them where we're at with things. Um that's how we we get an accurate picture of where we're at, I mean, that's something, that's why I'm fully transparent with what, where it's at, because. Um you know, we 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 need it, this is it, this is, these, these areas, like I said. This can be our, our. This can be our, our, our. Our plan, our strategic plan. Because everything, when we talk about it, like, you know, I mean, we don't have to just, I mean, holistic wellness, that, that, that. That can just, we can expand that and say, our staff as well. Right? I'm always talking about uh with with the the coordinators and directors about. Creating a safe, supportive, collaborative environment. That's what, that's what this is. Right? We, we have to be able to work and talk openly like we are right now, right? I mean. But but move forward by asking tough questions. Um, but I I hope that answers your question, Mr. Montoya.
It, you have, obviously, there's a lot of work. That has been done and still needs to be done, and I just wanna make sure that we're fulfilling that commitment. To our communities because at the end of the day, that's what the five members of the board are responsible for.
Yep.
On whether or not um. Our students are successful from these communities and going in there and asking and engaging and finding out what direction they wanna go in. And when you look at that list of the things that the students were asking for, they say. Help me with. Students, that's just a little bit of what they need. And and again, for us to take that time and ask for their time for that investment, that's. That's a huge commitment for us to fulfill, but certainly. Uh, in my humble opinion, our responsibility, and the only reason why we're here is to ensure that, that they are successful. So um, I do appreciate your comments. And um, one of the last things I I I have to ask though is. What um, what grades? Will will have exposure to? The graduate profile process because I know in conversations. Uh, former superintendent, one of the things we're looking at, and especially when we look at. Whether it's place-based education or community schools, even into the junior high. Is that a consideration? Has it been a consideration with your? With your um, with your team?
Yes, absolutely. I'm glad you asked that question because just today, uh, I met with Dr. Lopez and Michelle Moncay Gill about uh. About, about community schools. And I think I've, notice how I had made a comment that. We have the components. It's being utilized. The, the, the disconnect is that each year. It wasn't utilized as this is what we need to do. Okay, it's there. Um, I feel like our arrows weren't aligned. But what that graduate profile does is it brings it all together. That's why I keep saying. It can essentially be our strategic point plan because that's the direction we're wanting to go. Um, so, and and I, and I, I made that comment that there's, these components, I mean, these things can run and they're running. But it takes, it's intentionally. Asking the question every time, how does this program align to the graduate profile? If it doesn't align to it, we should not do it. Everything, everything that we do. Right? From now, moving forward, should be based on this. So I'm not saying it's not. It's not implemented. It's, it's there. It's, it's like, there's, you know, we have bones. We don't see them. Right? It's the bones. It's what's keeping our students moving forward. Okay? Um, so, so that's how we need to use it just moving forward. So like, very similar. I asked uh Ms. Moncay Gill, how does this community school support our four tenants? And our comment was, it'll support every one of them like this, like this, like this, like this. So that is how, I guess, that should be the metric moving forward for how we adopt programs. Um, we, for example, like I said, here in a couple of weeks, uh, there's a contingent of teachers going to. To uh to 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 vet a, a project-based learning program to see what it looks like because, y- you know. Uh, project-based learning will check all four of our boxes, our four tenants. So that, you know, our kids are collaborating, they're working on real work, real, real world projects. They're not just doing, they won't just be doing worksheets. So i- it's, it's, it's a, it's a, I I guess it's a lens. It's like putting glasses on. You know, those four tenants. And if it doesn't, if it doesn't appear in our glasses, we should not do it.
I uh, I appreciate that because I have been. Talking about that for the last couple of years, uh, about that project-based learning because I know it works. Um, I'm, I'm one of the mindset to believe that. An individual has to learn about self first and that self also includes a community. When you look at that, look at it from that perspective, but. Project-based learning, you can do everything. Every. Metrics of learning can be taught from within that community, whether it's science, the history, the government. Um, economics, art, music. Just in this one community. One of the fine examples that I use are are to people and colleagues that I have around the state about. The governmental structure on the reservation. A true representative democracy where it's the voice of the people down at the chapter houses that have the say. In the direction, whether something goes or doesn't. Uh, it's not representative democracy. It's again, a partisan or. Uh, democracy where the, the voices, the people are heard and then responded to. Uh, which again, a construct even at the federal level, that's where that came from. Uh, so having said that, I I truly appreciate it. One of the last things. Uh, Mr. Deswood is you made the comment about um quantifying time. And in my humble opinion, that. You know, it's not just about investment of time, it's about. The result of the outcome for that time that is invested. Uh, that's why I'm sticker on it because we can say, or anybody can say, yeah, I spent. An hour and a half, two hours over there. Okay, well, what's the outcome? So I I appreciate, appreciate your acknowledgement and your indulgence of my questions. At this time, certainly, because like I said, to me, that's. That part of it is, is a very big. Part of what we're doing and why we do what we do for these communities to ensure that we're. Trying to graduate students that are ready to move on and succeed at whatever it is they choose to. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. And I think uh you 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 kinda just answered it because, um, you know. You all push us and in turn, you know, we, we ask those tough questions. And and try to find a way to move forward because, I mean, that's the only way to improve. That's the only way to improve is. Asking tough questions and and, you know, pushing our staff. So thank you for that.
Uh, are there any more um questions or comments from the board? Uh, Ms. Tasky has, um. She says she liked that intentional, intentionally ready and thank you for your work. Secretary Wells, do you have any comments or questions?
I think the presentation was very uh informative and thorough and. Uh. The question was very exhaustive. Uh, I think. I think that uh. For my part, everything was covered quite well.
Okay, great. Um, I have a couple of questions and comments, um. So. I, I, I love this presentation and um, I know for a long time we, we were. On board and implementing a lot of this, but I like how it's re-put together. And um. I just wanted to know how much more we can support our teachers in the way of um having them. Go back to school or we have a lot of them who are in school right now, who are, um. You know, working on their bachelor's or working on their masters and. Um, some of them even working on their doctorate degree for a specific subject. Teaching like math or English and, um. How can we support them more to finish their degrees and then having these teachers come back to the district? As experts within their own fields, like math, for example. Um. That's one question. And the other one is, um, I know that ICO had. This um particular topic in their department and, um. During, during that time, uh. You know, what, what had they? Why didn't they um have more? I, I know that it was stated that the ball was dropped, um, but why wasn't this implemented or? Um. Engineered more to, to be. To be in process already for our students, especially those who came out of COVID and now they're graduated. And they're off in college or they're in the military or they're just locally here working. Um, and then also with this, um, I'd like to see leadership. The district leadership be more um involved in the strategic planning. Um, and with collaboration. Because they all are experts in their own area, their own field. And, um, I, I think that's one thing that, that. Collaborating with, with district leadership. Um, would be great and more um inclusive and more insightful. And also reaching out from middle school to the high school, the, their, um. Their leadership team of teachers who are there, who work the curriculum or talk about the curriculum that's being taught in the schools. Um, every weekday, I mean, every week, you know, um, get their input because they're with the students and. And they're in the, they're teaching. So, um, th- those are my comments. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you for those questions. Um, I, I think the first question was. About how do we keep teachers or get teachers trained and then bring them back? Uh, so I think one of the things, um. Uh, that, that, that I was a part of is a system. Um, it's a system called High Reliability Schools. Uh, there's a, there's, you know, the district to the east of us uses that. I, and why I, why I think that system's important is because, one. It, there's, there's a three sixty assessment. There's a three sixty assessment of um schools, leaders. Um, and district. Uh, so I think that's one way. I think uh providing. Opportunities uh for teachers to be a part of the decision-making process. Um, I, I think if you look at there's the, the research on, on teachers. One of the reasons why they drop out of the profession is because their voices aren't heard, their, their voices aren't validated. And we saw the survey that uh Mr. Venturina gave uh earlier, right? That's giving teachers uh a voice that, or or EAs a voice. Uh, we want them to see how they value their job. Um, also embedded in, in that high reliability school framework is um. Uh, the job embedded, um. Uh, professional development feedback, right? Um. Two, two observation, two formal observations throughout a year is, is insufficient. In fact, I was down in Albuquerque with uh. Principal Gleason and Principal Manuelito, and that's one of the things that they commented was that. A teacher who gets bi-weekly. Um, observation feedback and feedback from a building leader. Will grow more in one year than a teacher receiving twenty years of two observations per year. So. I mean, I mean, there's, there's a combination of things we can do. Uh, I know the district already supports teachers and and uh financially. And um, I believe some release time for, for them to work on, on getting advanced degrees. Um, and I know. Ms. Lunt Hill i- is really big on grow your own, right? Having programs like that, um, and then supporting them, right? Um, I know Mr. Mr. Um Donovan uh talked about um some of these bonuses, right? We gotta be competitive with it. Um, and and, um, you know, and then moving forward, you know, just making sure that, that uh, that. You know, having a safe environment, safe, supportive, collaborative environment where, where. Where teachers and and principals can share open and honestly because if, if. There's, there's a saying that says, if you have a staff meeting right here. And, you know, you, you, you talk about it and then teachers walk outside and then they talk outside. That's when the real work is getting done, but we want those teachers to come back in here and share and be open and honest without. You know, fear of retaliation. I think that's part of it. So that was question one. Um. And as far as uh the, the ball being dropped, you know, it just. When initiatives, whenever someone starts an initiative, uh typically when, when, when that leader leaves, that the. What, what that person was holding on their shoulders, um, you know, gets left in the weeds. Uh, I guess that'd be the analogy. It gets left in the weeds. Um, so there's, there's um different. Different ways uh for, for that, you know, you know, to, to, to point the finger at who did it or who didn't do that. Um, so I think that'll answer that question. Um, and and as far as leadership being more involved in the strategic plan, I know they voiced to being, you know, being, being part of that process. Um, I, I do, I have sat on the board or I do sit on the board of the large farm south of Farmington, Napping, and do involve our, our staff. And the five-year strategic plan. Um, so that's definitely, uh, directors would definitely wanna be a part of that. And provide input on uh the strategic plan. So I hope that, that answers your, your question, um, Ms. Uh, Ms. George.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, the only other uh. Thing that um I wanted to relay also is that, um, your presentation. Um, you know, it, it could be, like you said, it could be the foundation for s- uh strategic planning. And it also goes along with the um. The wellness policy because the wellness policy is made up of school. Whole school, whole community, whole child and, um, all their approaches, you know, you've. You've hit all the main requirements, nutrition, uh, you know, health education. Social, emotional well-being, you know, stuff, wellness and and all of that and. I, I'm really um proud of the work that has, that you recovered. With this and, you know, I'm glad it got handed to you because you really sorted it out and, um, it's. It really, I think that, 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 um. The, the outcome that you have on here where it had the, um, what the students would leave with. Um, the knowledge that they would leave with, I, I think that's very crucial. And if we can set up our students to be emotionally well. Um, you know, a- and they, they, they know where they come from. They have a foundation, they have something to fall back on. Um, that really helps them going into the military, leaving the reservation, going to college, um, you know, and. Or just staying here and having a regular, you know, job or a, um, working as a welder or a plumber. You know, I, I'm, I'm really, um. I'm really impressed with this and, um, it looks good on paper, but I know that you guys are really charging to really. Make it physical um for our students and, and I, I applaud, um. CCSE and, and the administration and all who are involved with you, um, on this. Because it, it really gives a hand up to our, our students and, um, you know, and. And for all that are involved. And Mr. Carlson, just to follow up, um. How district leadership can assist in creating, you know, the creation of this strategic plan and incorporate the graduate, graduate profile. With these strategic plans that were um laid out tonight in this presentation would be totally awesome. I, I would really like to see. Um, leadership because, like I said, they all have their own. Mastery and, you know, all that collaboration would just be a fulfillment to our students.
I appreciate that comment there, uh, Ms. George. One of the things that Mr. Deswood mentioned a couple of times, and I hope all the board members caught that, um. Was that the board can really kind of take up the. Um, where we left off when we, when we sit down and we work more on the strategic plan and point the district in the direction. What the strategic plan really comes up with our, our goal areas. We've already got the goal areas as far as I'm concerned in, in the, in the graduate profile. Uh, and so we can take it the ball and run with it now and, and along with whatever leadership the district does have. Um, and and I think I, again, I, I, I know that you all appreciated Mr. Desmond's, Desmond's present, presentation. And and I really do as well because, um, he, he didn't only just take it where it was. Um, but he, but he actually helped fix it along with all the different groups that he's spoken with. Um, to a, to a point where we can just go, here's exactly what we have. Let's make sure that everything we're doing is in line with this particular plan. So. Again, I appreciate, you know, bringing up the strategic plan. In line with this because I think we we really have a direction that we can go in our district right now. So, thank you for that.
Yes, are there any more comments um or questions for regarding the graduate profile?
Miss George, can I make one last comment?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
I I just wanted to e- emphasize that when I first started this, I said a lot of work was done before. I I took over this. Um but you know, just I I I I'll give credit where credit's due is what I'm saying, like I didn't. All I did was bring people together. A- and a safe supportive environment where they shared openly, right? They shared openly and and honestly about where we were. Uh so and and of course transparency about where we are in it. Because then I'm not, I'm not gonna sugarcoat it because this is, this is, this is the true state of things, but we know where we're at now. And now we know where we're gonna go. So, thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
I uh, Mister Deswood, I appreciate that. Because I know that there was a lot of people that that put a lot of time and effort into that and actually. Creating the uh template and mapping out the direction um for this program. And so uh my only suggestion would be to, if it were me, certainly to. Utilize their expertise and knowledge as much as possible to help you uh to be able to. Complete the process to ensure that it's it is successful. So, thank you.
My pleasure. I I'm just thankful Mister Carlson hired me to help out.
Yes, I just have one one more comment. Um I I really appreciate the fact that you said safe spaces and that. Um the collaboration from the staff and um their inputs. Um especially, you know, the stakeholders that they felt safe to bring up. You know, things that they saw that were wrong or that were lacking. And you know, for a long time, CCSD had this. Reputation of retaliation and um you know, getting in trouble or any. A- all of that negativity and it's, you know, it's it's starting to change and the culture is starting to change and I see that and I've been. Hearing that and so I just really wanna keep that notion going about, you know. Retaliation and letting the staff and the the stakeholders know, especially um. Our staff who work for work for us and they have students in the in the school district. A lot of times they wanna voice for their child or their grandchild or. You know, but but they're afraid because they they work for the district, but they're, they have to remember first they're they're a stakeholder. And then an employee and they have that right to speak. And so keeping that in mind that, you know, there's a safe place and. That the administration from the superintendent, assistant superintendent, that they are, you know. They have an open door and that they are listening and that they are making it well-known that. Retaliation and and that kind of um bullying, staff bullying is not gonna be. Um tolerated and you know, that that's making a huge shift and that's part of our big re- um retention as well. You know, to our staff, so I really appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh if there's i- no more um questions regarding the um graduate profile, we'll move on to. Oh, social studies adoption by Jennifer Huffman.
Hello, school boards, uh members, Suzette Hosky, Marion Wells, Gary Montoya, Cheryl George. Superintendent Steve Carlson, Assistant Superintendent Peter Deswood. Um I'm stepping in for Jen Huffman to present the social study adoption. Um Sherling Rivers, um the instructional resource coordinator under curriculum and instruction. So I'm here to present the social study adoption, the rubric and what is requested from the board. Okay, so back back in the summer, summer of two thousand twenty-two, we had a social study curriculum equity. Um not equity, but council that attended the social study curriculum under New Mexico Peds. Teachers from across New Mexico met to review materials and ex- access them based on a rubric. In the fall of twenty twenty-two, we finalized the ranking of titles. Distribute and exam copies of texts that were ordered. CCD, CCSD ordered exam copies from two complete. From two companies that were recommended by Public Education Department Review. Uh two of the companies that were on there was Savis Learning and McGraw-Hill. And we do have a representative from McGraw-Hill, Erin Springer, online as well. So at the time of the rankings, McGraw-Hill was not recommended for fourth grade. Both companies were. Recommended with reservations for fifth grade. No company were was recommended. Savis Learning was recommended with reservations for eighth grade. Additionally, neither publisher nor any other. Had a recommended text for seventh grade, which is New Mexico history. With reservation, we mean that there was a few minor things that kept the resource from a full recommendation for the adoption. Since this time, both companies have addressed the reservations for these grade levels. Next slide, Miss Ray. In the spring of tw- twenty twenty through three, exam copies made available to stakeholders for review and presentation. And part of that was the instructional coordinator's uh position was to go and uh present to the. Teachers as well. There were um staff review at hell that the ship brought. Boardroom where we invited all the teachers, we emailed the principals and uh forwarded emails to their staff. To come in and review the two textbook companies that was there. We also invited the Equity Council member, ICO. To come in and review the text book material as well for it being culturally relevant as well. Uh we also did a staff presentation at the boardroom with both. Companies sending in representatives to come and present to teachers and uh any staff that came in. We also sent out a email to principals again to send and also. A robocall to have a public presentation at the ship out boardroom. Again, we did have both companies come in and represent and present to the public either in person and also through. Zoom meeting. Next instructional coordinators took the materials to their respective schools. We did have all eight elementary schools in the school tour. We also had the three middle schools. Involved and the four high schools involved too, in which it um instructional coordinators stayed. All day at the school and when teachers had time to come in during their prep time, before school, after school, lunchtime. They came in and reviewed the rubric and as coordinators, we answered the questions as much as we could. Um from the presentation that was presented. And we answered any question. They also fill out a rubric that was given to them as well. And you should have a rubric attached to the questions that was relevant to the teachers. Was it student-friendly? Um to the students, was it something that the teachers could utilize between those two companies? And now that that rubric is where we based our numbers on there. And here is the results of the voting counties. Now, according to the rubric, it's not based on, we did not have three hundred and eighty teachers in the elementary level. It was based on the rubric. Where the highest being was three points, the next one was two points. The next leveling was one point and then zero points. Again, that was based on. Looking at the student text, was it student-friendly? Was it something that the student, the students could adapt to? Um and also as a teacher, was it, was there a le- lesson involved, differentiated instruction? Uh was it culturally relevant? Was there EL instruction involved in in the rubric too as well with both companies? And as you can see, um the elementary school uh voted more for McGraw-Hill over Savis Learning. The middle school had McGraw-Hill again over Savis Learning and the high school. Had McGraw-Hill for Savis Learning too as well. So based on the teacher voting, the curriculum instruction department recommends that the district adopt McGraw-Hill as a social study resource, beginning with the. With the school year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. The materials that were included for both companies was that it was a printed resource. Digital resources can be used offline and this includes a seventh grade solution for New Mexico history and geography. Free professional development will be offered both online and in person for one school year. Uh the Graw Hill also provided a letter stating that their products do not contain information of the critical race theory. So based on the recommendation, we recommend that McGraw-Hill would be the new social study curriculum for the next following school year. I'm open to any questions.
A question.
Uh go ahead, Mister Montoya.
So, Miss Rivers.
Yes.
I'm gonna make assumption that the other company, did they address um CRT in their book?
Yes.
Ooh, okay. Well, good. Um I appreciate that. I mean, I have my opinions on that and I certainly won't get into it here, but. It's just the fact that um. That McGraw-Hill provided an information in the letter saying that it does not. Um contain information on CRT, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, if I may.
Go ahead, Mister Secretary Wells.
I'm glad the that the recommendations uh are McGraw-Hill. Uh and that they made that statement on their own because. Um many of my constituents expressed uh. Negative uh feedback concerning that. So that's comforting for me. And will be for many of my constituents that uh that voiced their concern.
Thank you.
Yes, um I would concur with um Secretary Wells as um. The same basis, my constituents would would be um. More inclined to McGraw-Hill curriculum. Um as it states, it leaves out some, you know, of the um. Things that we're not co- really ready to to have in our district. Um so, thank you. Any other questions? I'm sorry, go ahead, Miss Rivers.
No, I I was just reviewing that with both companies, what we look at with the rubric and mainly from this. Uh teacher view is to really look at the lesson planning uh meets the teacher's need as well. Again, with differentiating instruction, meeting at the different needs of students. As well as special education students and uh also with our EL students as well and also our gifted students. Can't forget about our gifted students with those different levels that we have. So with the presentation that was presented, each company presented. More of those different level, but again, it was going off what the teachers' needs were and what they felt that was that best meet. Their needs.
Great. Uh is there any other questions or comments for Miss Rivers regarding the uh McGraw-Hill presentation? Or social studies adoption, sorry. If there's not any questions, thank you, Miss Rivers, for stepping in and giving us that presentation tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you everyone.
Thank you. Uh we'll move on to P, Safety Protocol for Animal at Large by Cindy Theodore, Devin Verhose. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Thank you, Board Member George. Um my name's Devin Verhose. Uh thank you. Board President, Vice President, fellow board members, Superintendent Carlson, uh Assistant Superintendent. Uh Mister Deswood. Um I'd like to just go over the. The uh bus registration, ridership rules and regulation and parent consent changes. Um the first change would be uh section eight, up at the top there marked in red. Uh to strike out preschool students and kindergartners and then uh put in the language all elementary and middle school students. And then adding to uh section uh number nine. And putting in the safety protocol for animals at large for all uh grade levels K through twelve. Um and if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to read that to you guys or if you guys wanna read that and then if we have questions about it or concerns. Whatever you guys would like.
Uh you can go ahead and read it.
Okay, very good. Um so under the safety protocol for animals at large, um if an unfamiliar or aggressive animal. Uh wanders near a bus stop, the bus driver will take necessary precautions to ensure the student's safety. The student will only be released off the bus if a parent or guardian is present at the bus stop. If there's no parent or guardian at the bus stop, the bus driver will call the office to report the situation. All attempts to contact the parent or guardian will be made by the transportation office. If no contact is made, the student will be returned to their school and the school will be notified of the returning student. As part of the. Of the school bus safety, all students will receive a presentation on how um to be safe when they encounter animals, specifically. Dogs. Students will learn to take certain steps to prevent dog bites or attacks such as. Do not approach the animal or encourage behavior or feed it. Give space. Move to the opposite side of the street slash road. Put as much space between you and the animal as possible. Do not make direct eye contact. If the animal does come toward you, try to get something between you and the animal. Don't run. Running away can make the dog wanna chase after you. If a dog approaches you, stand still. Often dogs will become bored and walk away. Get help. Report as soon as possible to a parent or an adult. When reporting aggressive animals include. Exact location, address, description of home, et cetera. Complete description of the animal that would include color, size, breed, gender if possible. Nature of the abuse or problem. Take photos if possible. And then to report any issues to the Navo Nation Animal Control. And then the numbers are provided there along with uh contact Navo Nation Police Department. And with that, I stand for any questions.
Are there any questions from the board or comments? Or go ahead, Mister Montoya.
No, I said I have none.
Oh, excuse me, sorry. Um Miss Suzette. Said um will animal control also be called if the students are returned to school due to the danger? Will there be extra time provided for them to pick up their child or children?
Okay, uh to the to the first question, yes, uh we'll work closely with Navo Police Department and. The Animal Control Department. We've we've heard that it it we, it's hard to get a hold of animal control. We have a really good working relationship with the new DC uh for the Navo Nation um uh Police Department. So uh working with the PD first, calling them first and then um getting animal control involved. Um yes, we would do that.
Okay, thank you. And her correction was um them meaning parents.
Uh can you repeat that, ma'am?
Oh, um I was just stating that Miss um Miss Vice President Hosky's um clarification was them, she meant parents. I was just state, reading her statement.
Okay.
Yeah, um you had answered my question, um cause I was gonna ask you how the um. Rapport was for the animal control, cause I know they're. They're pretty limited here in Shiprock, but um you answered that question already, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any more comments or questions from the board, Mister Secretary Wells? Do you have anything?
No, he answered uh, he answered pretty well all my concerns. Uh seems pretty thorough to me.
Okay, um Miss Hosky, Vice President. Asked, will extra time be provided for the parents to pick up their child or children if it's in the evening? Asked, will extra time be provided for the parents to pick up their child or children if it's in the even well, children?
Yes, absolutely. We'll 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 work with our staff in bringing them back to the school to to make that happen.
Okay, great. Um, is there any more questions or comments uh for Mister. Verhose regarding the safety protocol for animals at large? Okay, if there's no additional comments or questions, thank you, Mister Verhose.
Thank you.
And we will move on to Q. Doctoral Program Research Study on the Implementation of Social Emotional Learning Curriculum. In the secondary schools with Native American students by Sandra Westbrook.
Good evening, good evening, board members, um Superintendent Carlson, Assistant Superintendent. Deswood and um. All of my colleagues on Zoom tonight. Um, I am going to share my screen. Uh, my name is Sandra Westbrook. I'm an assistant principal at Kirkland Central High School. I originally grew up in Shiprock, New Mexico, um, and. Have worked in over twenty years in education in private and public in the public sector in secondary education. And most recently with the last um almost six years now at Kirkland Central High School, so. I was accepted to um Arizona State University Mary Lou Fulton College. Um, Doctor of Education Program last year um in Leadership and Innovation. And one of um, one of my action research projects that was accepted um through the institutional research. Board um was in regards to this study, so. The title that is on the agenda um actually has gone through some transformation. It's actually now titled. An Navajo Perspective of Implementation of a Social Emotional Learning Curriculum in a Secondary School. And I really um love um all the conversation tonight because everything ties into S E L. Um, the B P A, the public speaking, the um. The graduate profile that Assistant Superintendent Deswood talked about, referred to earlier. All of it ties into social emotional learning. And the self-efficacy development of self-awareness, development of self-control, interpersonal skills that students. Are um learning at this age. So just a little bit of background. Um, the last two years have shown an increase in student referrals to social workers or counselors in secondary education to assist with the anxiety and stress. Of going back into an in-person classroom environment. This has affected students' overall ability to pu- to perform at pre-pandemic standards. So overall, our pre-pandemic graduation rate for the state of New Mexico, um, for Native Americans graduating with a high school diploma. Was around sixty-five percent. Um. In the fall of last year, our district conducted a social emotional survey, um, which. Showed that there were student barriers to education range from having to assist. The family with either working outside of the house, taking care of family responsibilities. Uh, basic, basically a lack of resource in a rural area, which which we all know since we were all here. Post pandemic, the struggle has been to not only assist students coming back into the learning environment. But to also assist those that are having difficulties in the transition to in-person learning. When some students were virtual um for two years, so they were either working, taking care of family members, um, they had experienced. Um, trauma, death in the family due to living situations, all of these different factors compounded their ability. To focus on academics. Um, in my role as Vice Principal, I noticed that um students were struggling with utilization of technology for learning. So another layer that was built in um going into the pandemic was going one-to-one. Um, dealing with an additional layer of stress, which was not having the infrastructure set up for technology-wise for. Our students that lived either on the reservation or did not have access to internet, um, falling further behind in their educational performance. So as students have been have returned to the traditional setting in person now for two years, um, the in the increase in stress and anxiety. Among the high school students is displayed through lower attendance rates. Because they're not grasping the material, because they're hesitant to speak up, that they didn't learn um material during the COVID. Setting or that increased stress of being around persons at the school due to various reasons which have already been mentioned. Uh, but basically, it's just dealing back with the transition, being back to school and um um learning to interact with one another. Education can be at times the last thing on a student's mind when they have other more pressing issues in their home environments. So these stressors are a problem as they impact our students' ability to learn. So as stated in conversations earlier throughout the board meeting, we're we're tasked with. The teaching high school secondary students to to develop their self-awareness, to develop these interpersonal skills. That are vital for schoolwork and life success. And um in May of last year, in a the New Mexico Public Education Department um developed a survey. That led to um the results yielded that. The New Mexico P D provided schools with a free platform for social emotional learning, which was the seven mindsets. So um in learning through the district's incorporation of seven mindsets, um, prior to. Prior to seven mindsets, the S E L curriculum, they had gone with the restorative approach for two years. And then uh from two thousand to twenty twenty-two, I believe, and then this year they've started instituting the seven mindsets. So in conversations at our um uh leadership level at our school, we have embraced. The, you know, we recognize that students are dealing with these issues related to social emotional wellness of our students. But also, uh, what can we do by taking the seven mindsets and incorporating it into our curriculum across the school? Uh, let's see. So, um, the seven mindsets platform fits in with the Navajo holistic philosophy. That, you know, everything, when everything is in balance, um, it's Hojo. So it's harmony, everything is being with one around you, it's it's balanced. When it's out of balance. This can create difficulties in coping with situations. So the seven mindsets platform incorporates all aspects of a holistic um environment. That would address S E L competencies for students. So um I submitted for permission for approval to move forward with cycle zero of this action research project. Which is um not right now working with students, but basically working is to providing professional development for teachers to increase their knowledge, skills. Attitudes and self-efficacy for developing the student's social emotional skills because. Um, when you step back and you are implementing a new platform, a new program, it adds additional levels of stress to teachers. And what we want to do is ease this in by first. Targeting the social emotional learning or social emotional wellness of our teachers so that they in turn. Can then assist students to reduce their anxiety levels. The research questions that are guided in cycle zero of this research is how and to what extent does implementation of science, seven mindsets affect teachers' perceptions? Of their knowledge about developing students' social emotional skills and skills for developing students' social emotional skills. How and to what a research question two, how and to what extent does the implementation of seven mindsets affect teachers' perceptions of their attitudes? About developing students' social emotional skills and self-efficacy about developing students' social emotional skills. Research question three, how and to what extent does implementation of seven mindsets affect students' perceptions of their social emotional skills and psychological well-being? Research question four, how and to what extent does implementation of seven mindsets affect students' perceptions of their anxiety levels and their intention to stay in school and graduate? So all of these research questions um are are again for the teachers and in cycle zero, it's um. Asking three to four of my colleagues to participate in. Interview questions, uh, of course, this would have to be consent given by the teacher to participate in this. The questions that are asked are listed, why did you become a teacher? What issues, obstacles do you face daily related to instruction, discipline or behavior? What life experience do teachers bring into the classroom and how might these experiences affect teachers' perceptions of students who are dealing with social emotional issues? What is the most challenging social emotional issue that you have dealt with to date? From your perspective, what are the two most important soc- socio-emotional matters faced by your students? From your pers- professional perspective, what will assist students most in dealing with socio-emotional issues? What do you know about social emotional learning strategies, curriculum, et cetera? What professional development or training have you received with regard to social emotional learning strategies? What kinds of professional development about social emotional learning strategies would be best beneficial to you and your colleagues? What else would you like to add that we haven't already discussed, or what questions do you have of me? Cycle zero research focuses on the the um. The teacher's perception of implementing implementing the social emotional learning program. And then from there, cycle one um will proceed next year. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Question.
Yes.
Miss Westbrook. I uh appreciate the consideration and and good luck. In your endeavors and completion of your doctorate. Um, in regards to some of the questions that should be posed. Is there a perspective of? The. I guess the responsibility or the influence of the families. In the development of the students' social emotional welfare uh prior to. School, coming to school, whether that be at any grade, any grade level.
Uh, eh, are you referencing the seven mindsets platform that will be utilized, or are you referencing the research question that's being asked?
Both.
So the seven mindsets platform um has several components built into it, uh, which is one of the reasons I I I. Kind of embrace the platform now. Uh, part of it was because our district went with it, so it was after researching it, there's a. Component for the teachers, a component for the students, a component for the educators, and a component for the parents. So that, so that eh, so that we're touching on every aspect in um the S E L curriculum. Hopefully, if they log in or if they have conversations with their students. In the research project itself, um, we have not gone as far as looking at the parental involvement, but. Right now, the focus is on providing the professional development for the teachers for the implementation of the S E L curriculum.
Okay. I uh. I understand that, like, I I get what you're saying. But um, just from, I guess, a uh. Certainly a knowledgeable foundation for. The educators when they look at it to be able to. And I don't know if you've heard me say this before in uh board meetings, we start talking about things like this, uh. I'm a firm believer in the attentiveness of the human being of that educator in the classroom. To be able to see and understand some of these issues and concerns that these teachers are dealing with. And um when you have people that are that way, and the natural and holistic tendency of that individual is to. Work with that child of from whatever perspective that it is that they have to be able to help them deal with that. Um, there's been some fine examples that I'm aware of, of teachers utilizing. You know, as they talk about restorative depth of. Or even. Um. In the Navajo tribal court context of peacemakers within the classroom. Without being told to do that, but it's just a natural inclination because of. The understanding of the situation that may have arose within that classroom and then the educator. Deals with it again from that very holistic standpoint of creating a much better. And to an environment between all the individuals. So that's why I'm kind of asking that question in regards to looking at that portion. Um, when it comes to. The development of self of the individual um emanating from the home first.
And definitely, that's a framework um that I'm incorporating into the research study utilizing Brofenbrenner's um ecological framework. Where the child is at the center of the micro system and that their first interaction is with the family system, and that's what's gonna have the most impact.
Absolutely, because um. Was in a presentation with uh Doctor Kehete. Um, I'm sure you're aware of who he is and all his writings, and that was one of the things that I had asked him because of. The perspective that he's coming from and and I truly respect it, but to me, the the big question again is. When he was talking about these things was, who is responsible for teaching that child itself about self? And we're talking about the whole child, right? Not just the identity of the human being, but in its entirety. From again, that holistic standpoint. And he acquiesced and he said it's the family. Which, um, as you all know, I know not everybody has that, I get that, but. Uh, I've been here long enough to know and understand, uh, even by circumstances as a young boy. Um, but again, with educators having that understanding and seeing that, that certainly helps them. To be able to project some kind of, um, I guess. I don't want to say resolution to use that term, but. Guidance, I guess, to help uh figure out what how they need to deal with these students. So, but I I certainly like your direction and the perspective that you're bringing to it. So, um, again, good luck with that. And a personal question, if I may, you're from the Westbrook family here in in Shiprock?
Yeah, my parents were Marshall and Ruth Westbrook, and my brothers were um Kenneth and Alan that um went in the military and um. Were deceased in the Iraq and Afghanistan wars.
Yeah, I I I know, and and your brother Alan was like a brother to me, man, he. Him and I had a. Relationship that uh was a bond because something that happened one of these days, I'd like to tell you about it, but it's. Pretty damn funny and how he how he was, he was endeared to me because of uh of what had transpired. Between uh him and I, but uh I I love that man to death, I really did. He's a great human being.
He is a big teddy bear for sure.
Was, yes, he was, absolutely. So, uh, again, good luck. I I uh appreciate you taking my questions and the. Best of luck to you in in your completion of your doctorate.
Thank you.
Um, okay, uh, we have um Miss Aspis who joined um joined us at nine thirty-nine P M and she's got a question.
Yes.
So, uh, as as I see these come through on these uh doctorate uh studies and. And um. For me, um, you know, just thinking about it and. As I seen it on the a- agenda, I. You know, the process of the person asking the board permission. And is that permission to um have time during work? To work on this and and I feel like, um, in that unsaid way. Uh, it is. It is doing so, it is asking permission, whereas we have. Our staff, our teachers, um, which we really need. And they're not allowed to do some type of study or advancement of of themselves. During their work time, um. So to me, I I I'm really looking at this and it's only in hindsight that I am to know. And that I'm hearing that it's abused, um, but. That that's my feelings right now and and then the topic that you introduce, uh. It 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 seems like it would conflict and and it's redundant to what we. Also have in in those areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Aspis, and if I can um, uh, if I can address that, um. It it the asking permission is to conduct the study at Kirkland Central High School. It is not necessarily during um work time as seven mindsets platform has been adopted by central um Consolidated School District. When it's actually utilizing professional development that we're already gonna be doing, uh, implementing the S E L program with teachers. The actual research study is meeting with three to four of my colleagues in asking them the questions that I had listed on there. Which would not be during work time, it would actually be outside of work time. I I hope that helped clarify some of your questions.
And and I hope you realize that as a board member, and we're always talking about equity. And uh especially with our union. So when I'm looking at that and then also both the there's union members and both administrative and the staff and and teachers and but um, and those different crafts other than administrators. And I hope you see my point and the fairness of it, that they're not allowed to do so during their working hours. Um, I'm I'm including maintenance, I'm including bus drivers. And so, you know, that's that's my look on this and my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, I I I hear you, I hear what you're saying.
Okay, thank you. Um, are there any more comments or questions for um Ms. Westbrook? If there's no more um questions or comments, we, thank you, Ms. Westbrook, for your um presentation, appreciate it. Uh, we will move on to the next agenda or the next on the agenda. So, request for approval of gift donation from East Walmart and Noshchitty Elementary School, do we have a representative? Hmm, Noshchitty?
Yes, you do. Um, this is Mima Claw, also known as Wilhelmina Claw. I'm an ISO staff at Noshchitty Anukum. Um, good evening, board members, uh Mr. Carlson and uh Mr. Deswood. Um, so first of all, I want to say thank you for allowing me to come on for this approval. I am, want to make a correction on one of them first. Actually, what I did put together was information of this donation of bikes. Um, the donation that I went through was um through NECA that um Navajo Engineering Construction Authority. Um, I went um through them and I still am awaiting response from Jackie Begay. Who I've been in contact with, and um I just gave her information regarding um the type of bikes that we would like, and also put in the amount of um each of the bikes and the requested number of bikes we are asking for. Um, we had decided this school year, um Mrs. Keems, Candace Keems, and a couple of our staff members to um encourage our students, which is actually our goal to raise our attendance for the school year twenty-two, twenty-three. And um, and by doing so, um I thought that it would be good to um build a good um building relationship with the local business NECA. And I'm still waiting to this day for um Ms. Jackie Begay for the um request that I made. There you could see my letter that I made, um to Miss Begay. And I did indicate that our goal was to raise the attendance for our students, and I know that after the COVID pandemic, our students attendance had went down low. And um just to encourage the students to come back, we decided we tried to include um to do this um donation from NECA. I know it's very brief, but those are pictures of the bikes. That one would be, and most of the bikes that I was looking for are for students from pre-K to fifth grade. And I think there's some more down below. And it also indicates the prices of each bikes. For the upper grades, fourth and fifth, I did request for two each. And how we are going to decide on purchase, um decide on who gets the bike is the students that have good attendance. And the teachers will be tracking that and towards the end of this school year. We will be um having our discussion of who's going to get um those bikes. There you could see the age limits and the prices on those bikes. And of course, that was the total, it's one thousand seventy-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents. And with that, was there any questions? Of course, this is my first time um ever, ever, ever doing a donation. Or asking for a donation from one of our local um businesses.
Are there any questions from the board or comments?
I I have a question, Cheryl.
Okay, go ahead, um President Aspis.
Um, so the presenter, um, you're the one that's from NECA. Am I clear on that?
Um, no, I am, uh, I'm an ISO person, the Instructional Social Emotional Leadership Administrator with um Newcom and Noshchitty. But the request that I'm making for is the school, um Noshchitty Elementary School. Um, I've had been a teacher um at Eva B. Stokely for twenty-two years, and I applied for that position, the ISO program.
Okay, I I I get the picture now. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Um, Board Member um Montoya and Vice President Hasky have no questions. Uh, Secretary uh Wells, do you have any questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
It sounds like a good motivational um incentive for young kids. I think it's uh I think it's worth the um, the application, and I hope you're successful with it.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Um, my only, um, oh, go ahead, go ahead, uh President Aspis.
Yes, I I agree with Secretary Wells, this uh incentives and um certainly don't hurt when um especially for good attendance. And um, I I I I hope your requests are made and and it comes to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. City. Aspis, sorry.
Um, my only um comment is for um superintendent, um just in case this doesn't, this donation request doesn't go through, or if other CCSD schools want to um uh get involved with bikes, Navajo, yes. They have um five hundred bikes available um to give away to schools and um they're in good condition, and you just have to reach out to um Burning Man Festival, it's a Dine Bike Project, again, through the Navajo Yes Program and um, you know, if if your school or dorm or community is looking to get in touch um for bikes. Uh, it's perfect for security, senior centers, or folks looking for a smooth, comfortable ride, so you can get free bikes um from them as well if we reach out to them, just as a FYI.
Thank you for that.
Yes, thank you for sharing.
And he, yeah, and he's the same one that does the Shiprock Marathon.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, are there any more questions or comments from the board?
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. um Mima, for your presentation and stepping in for Noshchitty Schools, thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. With that, we'll move on. We'll uh go with the Johnson O'Malley Program grant application for school year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four.
Good evening, um, my name is Mia Sientes, I will be presenting the Johnson O'Malley Program application with Dr. Begay. So we'll go ahead and begin. So, overview of Johnson O'Malley, the purpose is to financially assist efforts designed to meet specialized and unique educational needs of eligible Indian students, including programs supplemental to the regular school program and school operational support. Next slide. So what makes student, so, excuse me, what students make a school district eligible for funding? And I've listed three, starting with eligible students are from age three years through grades twelve and memberships, and a re- federally recognized drive. Copy of student certificate of tribal membership must be on file, enrolled in any CCSD affiliated school. Next slide, please. So how does the JOM program work? The Navajo Nation JOM Program offers subcontracts with CCSD, there are two main requirements under the JOM Act and to assure parent participation and collaboration, which is the Indian Education Committee and Education Plan. Next slide, please. The establishment of JOM Indian Education Committee, nine members are to be elected parents of eligible Indian students enrolled in CCSD. Persons acting in local parentis. School officials or school administrators are not eligible per twenty-five CFR. I E C establishes procedures under the bylaws which the committee serve. Next slide, please. Um, we have some general comments, what is the education plan? Our education plan contains goals and objectives that address the educational needs of CCSD students and provides programmatic and fiscal services. Overall program implementation and evaluation. And it is written by our Indian Education Committee parents, which goes into what's allowed and what's not allowed. Our I E C is responsible for determining the eligibility of students and items to be purchased. Only items approved by the I E C, L E A, and J O M may be purchased. J O M is a supplemental grant. Funds are not to, funds are to be used to support existing programs and not replace programs that are being provided by another funding source. And then the last general comment is allowable, most of our allowable are for direct student instructions. And a few of those examples are CLRI-related instructional materials. E L, ELD instructional materials, student field trips and workshops. Cultural events and activities, college access and student clubs. Parent education and financial support for students, also known as our parental cost program. So going into the allocated funding, this is a tentative amount for four thousand six hundred and eighty-seven Native American students within the district. Our application is due at the end of March of every year. Um, so we have a budget set in our education plan and our education plan cons- our education com- uh, excuse me, give me one second. Excuse me, our education plan consists of five components, component one, two, three, and four. And five, our, three of our components are set at percentages. That's component three, which is parental cost at fifteen percent of the budget. Component four is for JOM administration, set for twenty-five percent of the budget. Component five is set at fifteen percent of the budget, and whatever's remaining, we put into component one and two. Component one and two to address direct student funding, which is some of the examples that I've mentioned before, CLRI, ELD. Next slide, please. So I provided a budget supply and equipment list. The program costs uh for supplies, materials, equipment are purchased for instruction that they focus in CLRI and the needs assessment that was created by the I E C. You'll see the program amounts here and the chart of accounts. Three twelve is known as supplies and materials, five twenty is known as parental cost support. Next slide, please. The next budget is for personnel, program salaries, and benefits. The program has a coordinator, clerical, and temporary personnel for bus drivers and teachers. So we have our coordinator set at ten percent, our clerical slash secretary set at twenty-five percent. Bus drivers and teachers for our field trips and our works workshops that the program provides in each location of the districts, and then the fringe benefits for all three. Next slide, please. The next budget is to have our administration and attend professional developments and require uh training on Indian education, legislative updates, curriculum and assessments. Part of the budget also goes to our Indian Education Committee to also obtain professional development to help them with their regular meetings, special meetings, work sessions, and help writing the grant during grant season. We have about ten personnel budgeted for travel, and then nine budgeted for I E C. Next slide, please. The next traveling budget that we have is for teachers, PDs, our Navajo heritage and dual-language teachers. Increase their skills, knowledge, best practices. Implementation for instruction related to all Navajo language and cultural development and learning. Our students are provided CLRI, college, career readiness, STEAM, student leadership, relevant field trips to promote identity development of those Native American students. And our teachers and students do co-share with other grants within the department. Next slide, please. And then additional funding sources such as um our I E C stipends mileage. Our con- our contractors slash consultants that provide cultural-related presentations or assemblies, we have an elevation dashboard that gets paid from JOM. Have another software known as Dream Navigator. And our overall program indirect cost. Next slide, please. So, within the JOM staff, the direct contact is by supervisor Dr. Berlinda Begay. Myself, Mia Sientes, and Pamela Jordan are clerical. Dr. Begay and myself stand for questions, thank you.
Do any of the board members have any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Uh, go ahead, um President Aspis.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead, President Aspis.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. With the I E C uh bylaws, why hasn't that been uh shared with the board? And, um well, let's just go, let's, um, let me ask that question first.
Um, we do have a current bylaw, um I believe that was uh submitted with this report. Um, but we do have an updated um bylaws that was revised. And so, uh Mia, is is that, um, can that be seen?
Yes, it's within the application, so if you scroll down toward So if you scroll down towards the end of the application, I wanna say around page fifty and then from from down. So these bylaws were updated as of recently every year. The I E C annually update. You know, the verbiage, what they wanna add, what works, what um is more. Okay, so right here we have all the bylaws and once the application gets approved and sent to us, it is shared with our finance department as well as our I C O director and coordinator. And it uh it also is with the help of our um contractor, Jermaine Chappelle. So she does advise and help consult the I E C during their work session to update these bylaws.
I had bad connection there and I I don't know what was said. So uh a few months back it was said that bylaws were created error. And uh the last time that bylaws were were are were revisited, they uh had a board member involved and this time there was no board member. So uh since then I've asked to see the bylaws, the newly made bylaws and today still haven't been given a copy. And uh and that goes back to uh I've said and stated before that I E C uh is the subcommittee under the board. And so we need to see those things and get them formed. And so we could get that and uh also the you mentioned um presenters. Uh how many presenters have you had?
Um President uh Aspas um I would like to share that the bylaws um when it was requested it was um given to our supervisor to share. Uh but the bylaws are always revised as needed. But a majority of the bylaws are um revisited and revised as needed. Every um year around April when the educational plan is being developed. And so um this information was also shared with the board um with the other documents for the J O M application. And um
and then um what was previously presented earlier. Uh the board, I mean I for me, I'm sitting here wondering uh is it in line with the bylaws? And I don't know what the bylaws say or and again, we have not seen that.
The bylaws um that we're using currently was from last year's application and the application was provided and presented at the board last year. And the invitation to the I E C special meetings and or I'm sorry, to the I E C meetings are um given to both the I C O coordinators, directors, um Ms. Ray, Miss Mr. Superintendent Carlson. And the board is more than welcome to attend those meetings where we discuss, you know, the updates of the bylaws.
Uh again, the I E C is a subcommittee. And I would like those bylaws to be presented and get brought over during a regular board meeting. So that the rest of our constituents and our audience can hear that and see what changes were made.
Um President Aspas, that is um the protocol and that is what's being presented tonight at the work session. And that has been the protocol for several years now. It's um always been presented before the board.
Yes, it has. Like I said, it it uh we were last told that it was revised. And so since then, I have not seen the revision. I have not seen. I we've asked about it and we asked why there was no board member attendance. Um never really got a clear answer.
Um Sharon, when were these documents um provided for the board members?
Dr. Brigade, what documents are you talking about? Are you talking about the bylaws itself or the J O M? Um that should be a Mia question.
No, I mean, when when are these documents available for the board to see?
They're in board docs right now.
Okay. So President Aspas, we do um adhere to the deadlines of um documents that need to be submitted for the work session. And um whenever those are available in board docs for board members to see I I guess is when you when that is available for you to um um look at.
Okay, my my next question about pres- uh presenters, how many has has presented?
President Aspas, could you um clarify what you mean by presenters?
Who who was the one that gave the presentation? It wasn't you, but Berlinda was.
It it is uh Mia. She's the J O M supervisor.
So she mentioned something about presenters of culturally uh related.
Okay, this is Mia. Um the J O M program hasn't really hosted a present presentation that's um that's coming from us, but we do provide funding for schools and other programs in the district that want to do presentations such as the safety net program. If they are requesting for assistance to cost share, then we can help cost share. But at the top of my head, I can say that it has been at least ten presenters and with the Navajo Nation J O M, they did share that their rate is only capped at five hundred dollars for a full day. And there is only so much presenters that we can help with. But in our education plan, components one and two, you'll see that there is a budget set for how much presenters we can use. So Sharon, if you could go to the J O M application and I can show Miss Aspas what I'm referring to. And then it'll be around page ten. Um Mia, Miss Aspas can't can't see the uh the the PowerPoint. Um she's via through my phone cause she had a hard time connecting. So she can't she can't do the the PowerPoint. Uh okay, well, like Dr. Brigade mentioned, when the application was uploaded to board docs, it is available for um members to review and if they have questions um it it's in the education plan, how much was budgeted for contractors um. Usually our contracting doesn't begin until towards the summertime during our Indigenous identity camp, but we have yet to finalize our summer school program. It is still in the works. So right there, so if you keep going just a little bit further. Keep going right here on page fourteen of the application, you'll see that um professional consultant services fee for events and activities set at five hundred dollars for a total of eight thousand dollars. So when you divide five hundred by eight thousand, that's the amount of presenters that we can um provide for schools and or our department itself.
The uh application date for the uh clothing is expired um.
Um President Aspas, you're breaking up pretty bad.
What was that?
Uh you're breaking up.
Okay, I was asking about the uh clothing program, the J O M. And how many took advantage of that?
Go ahead, Mia.
This is Mia. We just finalize, we just finished up our February month in Shiprock. We started off in November at Kirtland Central and over at Shiprock High School in February. And we're continuing to provide those same services in the Newcom area for the month of April. And in the Kirtland area, we've had about fifteen students that had showed up, not every day, but throughout the three weeks that it was provided. And then and then in February over at Shiprock High School, we've had about eight consistent students throughout the three weeks.
I noticed on Facebook that there was a post date and and the ending date was when I saw it on Facebook, there was I think maybe two days left. And for those students that they have been in sports and stuff like that, they yeah is is there some uh some way they can still uh apply or is that cut off?
President Aspas, um I think we're talking about two different things. Um our department no longer takes care of the clothing program. If you're talking about the tribal clothing program. It's now being taken care of by um um what is it called? The Navajo self-reliance. Um what Mia was talking about is the Indigenous identity workshops where the students were doing their sewing classes. So we don't take care of the Navajo school clothing anymore. We haven't been doing that for the past four years.
Oh, we lost we lost um President Aspas. I I think she lost signal. Um let me see, professional development. Um I have a question. Um for the professional development for Navajo heritage and dual language teachers um wh- it I I'm looking on here, it says P D survey report, employee travel forms, I C O requisition requisition form, flyer, agenda program, sign in sheet, participate evaluations. But I don't see um I don't see anything regarding um the that the teachers have to have in a uh uh lesson plan before they can go on a training um where it says number six here in this block. So why in the past have some of the the teachers um been um not approved for going for professional development based on a lesson plan, which is in not required in box six?
For um the where you're looking at for um box seven. Um
Um box six.
Yeah, so uh let me talk about box seven to relate to six. If you can scroll down a bit, Sharon. So these are the um events that are listen listed in the educational plan, which is what we're looking at that um Johnson O'Malley um will be funding. And so these are the events um that is different from box six. Box six is um specifically professional development and learning for the teachers. So what has been um required of us the past um two months? Um is also from finance and in these kind of events. We are now required to have a ninety day plan and lesson plans to be attached to events like this. Um but for number six, if teachers are to be um attending professional development, um it also has been um recommended to have their lesson plans submitted before proof before uh for approval.
Okay, who whose recommend or Mr. Superintendent, uh whose recommendation does that come come from to have a lesson plan for the teachers to go on professional development in six in the this number six because it doesn't it doesn't say that they're required to have that. We have to go what's on black and white. A teacher shouldn't be um denied going to professional development if it's not on black and white and going by a recommendation by someone. That's not that's not policy. We're we're not following the bylaws or policy that's in place on black and white. That's my that's my question, Mr. Superintendent.
Yeah, I can go ahead and and answer that to to the best of my ability. Um I completely understand your question. I think that was meant is kind of a carrot and maybe a stick um from the I C O department. Probably probably from uh Director Lopez Martinez to try to, she was having some difficulty getting folks to turn lesson plans, which I mean, I I can talk about this for a while. I I think that it's imperative the teachers have plans for for their teaching. Um however, as you suggested, if it's not a stipulation for this um we've actually not denied it. I don't know exactly who you've talked to, but I've had a conversation with Director Lopez Martinez about this. And I've asked her to, you know, kind of acquiesce and we don't deny training requests. And I know I don't wanna talk about specific individuals, but um we're not making that turning in lesson plans as a stipulation. So um I I agree with what you're saying. On the other hand, it's it's difficult when you're trying to get lesson plans turned in and it can't happen so. But uh I can I can make sure that doesn't happen where training is not denied, cause maybe that training will be helpful in, you know, writing those lesson plans.
Uh yes, that
Mr. Carlson, may I may I speak to that, please?
Absolutely, Director Lopez Martinez.
Yes, uh uh Miss George. Uh on the professional development for uh for the teachers, because it is professional development for them the lesson plan requirement is not for them. The lesson plan requirement was for when when they're requesting uh to take students to different activities and things like that. Right now, we have not denied uh any uh teacher professional development. For them to go, because we do know that that's a big requirement for them to uh for their five twenty licensure. And so no teacher has been denied uh any kind of professional development. Um as a matter of fact, right now, we have a lot of teachers that are attending the uh. The Namabe Convention uh out there in in Albuquerque. So you know, I'm I'm sorry you're hearing that, because uh. No teacher has been denied any kind of professional development whatsoever. Uh we do are, we are struggling to receive lesson plans from teachers um. So that we can assist and look at what they're doing, so that we can go into the buildings. And to help them in the areas and to help support them. Uh so some teachers uh were not turning those lesson plans in. Uh and so uh especially when uh field trips were being required. That they do need to turn in a lesson plan with an agenda and all then for when they're taking students to different uh activities. So um I know, I hope that answers your question, but no teacher at any time right now has been denied. Uh any kind of P D um. If if the if the slots get full and we don't have enough funding. You know, we try to alternate for we can give opportunities to the ones that didn't get to go. The does that answer, does that clarify some of that, uh Miss George?
Uh yes, it does, but I I just wanna keep it uh the clarity part from field trips. And professional development for the the heritage and dual language teachers. I understand that, cause I see that there is a lesson plan and ninety day plan listed here. But also um you know, keeping it strictly professional development for those teachers that there, it's not implemented. In writing in this block here, but I do understand and I thank you for the um. The explanation and um. Thank you, I think Miss um Miss Aspis is back on, President Aspis is. Go ahead, Miss Aspis.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, President Aspis Aspis.
Yes, you did.
I am, yes.
Okay. Yes, um could you look at that J O M application and? I believe what's attached to it is striked through on the bylaw. And I would think that's very professional, so if you could take a look at that before that. Out there and uh thank you.
Yes, ma'am, we will do that.
Are there any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, if there's no more um any other comments or questions, we will move on to, uh thank you um. J O M for uh art, uh Doctor Berlinda and Mia. And um Doctor Lopez for the presentation.
Thank you, Board Member Cheryl George, um President. Aspis and I'm sorry if it was brief, I'm coming down with a cold and I could. Only last so long, but thank you, good night.
Um thank you, have a good night, I hope you feel better. Okay, we will move on to. Oh, number five discussions, uh A items for the March twenty first twenty twenty three regular school board meeting. Um President Aspis.
For the regular meeting?
Uh yes, ma'am.
Okay, um well, I I'd like to go ahead and put up more discussion um. I really wanted to to um. I I heard some of the the presentation on the dog issue. And and what I didn't hear were if we're able to. Uh provide our students with uh some type of uh like like pepper spray. Uh if uh uh I don't know what the laws are what. I I didn't hear that part and or he didn't touch on that and so um. And the flat flat um case was, it was two years in the banking and. Uh we can't, we can't have it, we can't have it that long, you know, somebody needs to respond. Or you know, there should be some way of arming themselves or. So uh I did, I really didn't hear that part of it. And and then uh also, I I would like to uh. Request the. The uh. I don't know if I'm able to say this, but um as as the general terms uh. Our legal situation as far as admin league.
Okay, uh did we?
And I I really wanna keep in the forefront and on this issue, because um still is very important. And and I I, you know, I know there was the presentation done already, but um. Again, I just wanna keep it on there and which is the uh the light. The bus stop light that you know start. I wanna keep that up there and also the uh um. The fine, the signage or. Have the the transfer of pay for the Kirtland Board. That's it, thank you.
Just to reiterate um regarding the pepper spray, I know that um Navajo Nation. Um pepper spray is not allowed on Navajo Nation as part of self defense and um also. As the bus stop is considered school property. Students wouldn't be allowed to carry pepper spray either, so we'd have to find another another uh. Uh solution to that, but Mister um Verhoss had um. Mentioned that the students would, based on the bus driver's um. Decision if that student is in danger. To keep the student on the bus, then return the student back to the school. And the parents would have enough time to pick up their kid and um the the. Parent would be notified to come to the school and pick up the the child. And then also he went down some safety protocols, if the student was to get off the bus and encounter. A dog not to run, not to make um direct contact with the um eye contact with the dog um. To stand still and place something like a backpack between the dog and the student um. So he he did have some safety options for the the students. But the initially, the student will be returned to the school. Um and then parents pick it up and they, he gave um three phone numbers for animal control Navajo Nation. Um and they're still working with Navajo Nation um. To with the um animal control here in Shiprock. And then Mister Montoya has put on here that eighteen years old to carry pepper spray in New Mexico, but I know on Navajo Nation you can't carry pepper spray. Um let's see, oh, we lost Miss Aspis again um. President Wells or I'm sorry, uh Vice President Hasky, do you have any um discussions that you would like on the? Regular school board meeting? Uh Mister Wells, Secretary Wells, do you have anything for the next board meeting for discussion?
Yes, I would like to, I would like to know if uh any progress has been made on. Uh information about digitizing our. Oh, can't think, not. The school records and that's not what they're called, I can't um transcripts. Because like I said before, we've got, we've got in boxes. Uh transcripts, paper transcripts stored and we need that, we need to get them digitized. And uh. Uh I know there are people available, I just wonder if anything has been done to find out uh. Who in the area would do that and maybe costs are. And there was uh. Well, there was one other thing I can't uh. Something in our discussion tonight, I was, I wanted to mention and my my uh. Voice wasn't working, I couldn't uh couldn't make connection, but I'll think about it and text it. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you, Mister um Mister Wells uh. At ten forty three um, Miss Aspis says she's, she's just gonna get off, cause she keeps getting disconnected. So um just wanna make record of that for her um, let's see. Board Member Montoya, do you have any discussions that you would like to be added to the regular school board meeting?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, um and Miss Hasky, let's see, did she respond? Okay, Miss Hasky says she doesn't have anything right now. And then for myself um. Let's see, I'd like to see if we could get data information on the SAT. Um how many students we um. That we have referred. And that would be for like sped and uh gifted. Um if we can get data, we don't need names, just number and and the data on that. And um the process of how and who does the SAT. Um process um and I think. I think that's it for my, for myself for now, anybody else have anything?
Yeah, I remembered what it was. It was about the the students, the gifted program and their request for. Uh travel, I think it was, or request for something anyway, they were. Uh advocating, including students. Uh who were not in the gifted program and. Uh I have a concern about that, not that the students are not uh worthy of that uh or. But if we allow um. That to be done at at this time. I'm afraid that would set a precedence and then they'd say, well, you let them do it, why can't we in future years, I. I would uh I would hesitate to approve that.
Okay. Um let's see.
I'd have to go back and and look, I don't have a, I don't have a. An agenda that I can see here, I'm on my phone and it's so small, I I can't read it, so. But at least I was able to get on.
Yeah, um I'm trying to figure out where it was that we were talking about that.
It was a request for a special request for uh gifted students to. Attend something and they they wanted to allow some others to do so as well and. And I would hesitate to do that, because if we, if we do that, that'll open the door for. Other saying, well, down the road, someone saying, well, you let. You let them go, how come you're not gonna let us go? I I hate to set a precedent like that.
Wha- was it the um Purdue, was it, it was tonight's?
Yes, it was tonight.
Um the only one that was on there was for gifted was um the the Purdue with Mister Venturino. And he said that they didn't have enough um uh. Gifted students, so that they had opened it up to teachers to um. Yeah, recommend students for that program?
Um I'm sorry to intercede, but I wa- I was a gifted teacher at the high school at Kirtland Central last year and. I I, you know, I'm sorry to speak up, but uh I do know there's over thirty gifted students at Kirtland Central High School. This current school year.
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Sorry, I just, I'm sorry to now and I I was trying to stay quiet on that, but. I do really agree with Mister Wells and Mister Montoya that, you know, the high school like Kirtland Central has over thirty students. That are gifted, that could probably really, really benefit a lot of seniors um also there, so. Uh you know, just to consider that he probably has that option as well.
Yeah, um Mister Venturino is still on here, so I'm sure that you could um, he could uh get in touch with you and. You you can get in touch with him and and get those um those students um uh um. On the on the list there for for that program, that trip. But you you would have to hurry, cause the time, the time is. Of essence, but uh okay, does anybody else have anything, uh any more discussion items? If not, we will move to adjournment and I would need a.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, thank you, Mi- um Board Member Montoya. Um motion to have an adjournment and Mister Secretary Wells seconded. So uh roll call, um Vice President Aspis, she she had to get off. And I see Vice President Hasky says yes, um Secretary Wells? Um Board Member Montoya? And myself, yes. That makes four yes, so we will adjourn the uh work session. And everybody have a good night, thank you for all who are still on and. Thank you for all the presentations tonight and uh everybody be safe and thank you.
If anybody's traveling, be safe.
Happy seeing Patty's Day tomorrow.
Oh yeah, wear green.
Indeed, wear green.
Good night.
Bye.